Okay, good evening. I call the Planning Commission special joint meeting with the Parks and Recreation Commission to order at 5:00 PM. It is Thursday, June 21st, and we are located in the council chambers here at Sammamish City Hall. So, welcome and hello, Parks and Recreation members. The next item of business is roll call, so I will start over here on my left with Kelly.
Sorry, Kelly.
Kelly Hildy, Planning Manager.
Rituja Endapure, Planning Commission.
Mark Baughman, Planning Commission.
Stephanie Hibner, Parks Commission.
Ann Klein, Parks Commission.
Shanna Collins, Planning Commission.
Sid Gupta, Parks Commission.
Larry Crandall, Parks Commission. No. Planning Commission.
Kathy Lo, Parks Commission.
Sarah Hoopis, Parks Commission.
Nancy Way, Parks Commission.
Jane Garrison, Planning Commission.
Angie Fesser, Planning Director, I mean Parks Director.
Okay, the next item of business is approval of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda? So, I need a motion to approve it.
Can I move that we approved the agenda as presented?
There's a motion in a second to approve the agenda. I'll do some favors, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, the agenda is approved. So, we will get right on to old business. And old business tonight is an update on the Urban Forestry Management Plan, which is really exciting. I know they have some new data for us. They have a story map that they're going to share with us. So, I think we have some interesting things planned for tonight. Don't feel bad about eating. If you need to get more food, get more food. We'll try to make it as comfortable and flexible as possible. So, with that, I will turn it over to staff. I think it's David Goodman tonight.
It is. Good afternoon, everybody. David Goodman, Senior Management Analyst with the Department of Community Development, and I'm joined by Ian Scott of D V Resource Group. So, we're really excited to be with you. There we go. We're really excited to be with you this afternoon to update you on some of the, all the work that we've been doing since we last reported on this with the commissions back, all the way back in February. So, I'll first pass it over to Ian, who's going to go over the results of our urban tree canopy study, which I know a lot of you are really interested in. And then he's going to, as Chair Collins mentioned, he's going to show you the story map website that we're just about ready to launch to the public. That's, I think, really, really cool, and I think we'll get a lot of people in the community, you know, really interacting with some of the data that we've collected over the course of the project here. And then we'll share a little bit, telling you about all the public outreach and engagement we've done, including our public events, our survey, our photo contest, and more. So, I will now turn it over to Ian, who will share with some of the urban tree canopy data.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me back again. I'm going to move around. Could I just?
Thank you.
And maybe you can help me advance the slides, maybe. There isn't a lot. You know, what I wanted to introduce, the UW results that came back with the UTC estimate. What that looks like is the pie graph up there. It added the grass vegetation. 25% came back as a good story. 21% came back as understory. What was that? Okay. Let's try that.
Thank you.
Okay. Can you hear me better? Really? Okay. Yeah, good audio, then. Yeah, so, from that information, you know, and it's important to note here that we don't have any historic analysis. It wasn't part of this project to look at past or urban tree canopy in the city. So, really just have a starting benchmark at this point. But you can see, we've put up some of the poster boards that we're using for public outreach, and one of them has a little bar graph there. Have you ever thought, are you familiar with what the tree canopy is in other cities? Have you heard? Okay, yeah. So, like, on that bar graph, we pulled from other cities. So, in Issaquah, they did it in 2006, and I think they were a little over 50% canopy. I'll give you some perspective, though, on there. Like, Seattle is at like 24%, and Tacoma is even less. But, you know, you can sort of see, you know, what kind of city do you want to be in, right? You know, like, when you start thinking about tree canopy, you know, there's, well, and I'm probably jumping the gun, because we're, you know, when we talk to the public about this, you know, it is pretty strong that people see the trees in Sammamish as defining life in Sammamish. I mean, it really is. So, having 48% canopy says a lot about that. We did canopy relative health mapping as part of this project, which is, it's not exactly like saying you have 75% trees in good condition. But what it did, took, take a look at, you know, at that pixel or object-oriented definition of canopy, and said, you know, if the color changes between, you know, one area canopy and then it fades to a certain spectrum and then back again, that's considered like poor condition canopy. So, going through that, we were able to at least say that 75% is in good or excellent condition. And because it's a GIS map, the city has the capability now to drill down and say, okay, so where are the areas that were defined as poor canopy? And even though, like, the UW wasn't able to give us conclusive results about locating pockets of laminated root rot, theoretically, there's some potential there. You know, another thing that we did is some other analytics, we were able to look at the environmental benefits of the urban tree canopy. And unfortunately, I probably should have put them on the slides, but the canopy, the benefits provided by the canopy, we've got that. So, I guess it's coming. It'll be included. What's that? Yeah, it's on the story map, isn't it? Right. Good. Which is the next slide. But, you know, I was excited, you know, even though we got inconclusive results from laminated root rot, we did look at canopy fragmentation. And in that, and there's an example of the canopy fragmentation over there that I can invite you to look at after as well. You know, that took that existing canopy that you're seeing on the map there and parsed out what is core or interior forest versus edge canopy versus patch. And the forest fragmentation is a kind of a measure of forest health for habitat, wildlife habitat, and corridors and movement. But coming back to laminated root rot, I talked to a colleague at the Washington DNR, and he says, well, you know, looking at that edge that is now mapped, that may be a good place for the city to start, looking at, you know, looking at like forest health, because laminated root rot tends to exploit where trees are stressed. And on that edge, it's likely the edge where there's homes or there's other things, you know, other issues that may point to something that would impact the health of those trees. So, we're giving, we're prepared to be giving the city some plans for studying the urban forest in further detail and developing management strategies down the road. Finally, we did map out the urban forest canopy according to sub-basins. So, we took the watershed, the watersheds that the city is, has knowledge of, or mapped out, and overlaid the canopy results, so you could say certain watersheds have more canopy than others. And that can as well be an indicator or direction of management activity. You want to advance it over to the?
I have a question first.
Oh, yeah, sure. Sure.
Can you explain that 60% potential?
Sure, yeah. So, that's the theoretical open spaces that could host trees. So, that's that, essentially, that 12% grass matches up roughly to what that extra is. And what we'll do is we'll work with the city, because we proposed priority planting, and they came back and they said, like, we've excluded golf courses and baseball fields and things like that that would show up as grass, but it's not really considered an eligible planting site. And so, we're working with the city to make sure that that information is accurate. But other than that, yeah, it's, you know, and what you wind up seeing, too, is sometimes with that potential canopy is that they're all like open, steep slopes, say, with views. So, you know, down the road, as a potential planting site, it may never be that, because the homeowner is never going to want to grow a forest in front of their majestic view of whatever they have. So, there's some challenges with reaching that 60% potential.
Is it mostly all homeowner lawns, then?
Oh, no, but I, you know, I don't have that information about how much private versus public land, the canopy. I don't think I have that handy.
I'm just trying to see what's realistic in terms of expectations and what we actually do.
Right. Well, what we do break down is the canopy by parks, and so you can have the potential canopy in each park. So, you know, if a park is fully canopied, it's 99% canopy cover, you know, it's pretty much a forested park. And then others come in at less, and you can say, oh, there's a good park, there's probably some good planting sites in there.
And what's the understory? I don't understand.
So, understory is the, is where it comes in as vegetation, but it's not, it's not considered tree canopy. It's low story. So, it would be picking up like rhododendrons and smaller things that are less than 10 feet tall, arborvitae shrubs, that sort of thing.
And in the grass, do you also count the grass that's like, for example, in the parks? So, you know, the commons that we have just behind us?
Yes. It would. It would. So, like, yeah, right down this hillside here where it's all green grassy meadow, it would suggest that that's potentially forested canopy. And that may not be the direction that the city wants to go, but it's out there.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes.
Wait, let's just step?
So, this is from 2015 data? Yes. Yeah.
So, do you have any? Like, that was for?
So, now that the information is available, it's, there's a potential to get that. It's not, it's not part of this project to break that down. But, you know, it's like, and when we get into the story map, and as you, as end-users browse the story map, you might find yourself zooming into a spot, you know, like, I know this was a development. I know that this is just turned over in the last few years, and you can see how much canopy is there that technically would be gone. You know, we've worked with other clients with additional information to say, you know, we know there's canopy missing here, here, and here. And so, even though we leave them in at the GIS layer level, we can denote that in the report. So, if there is, you know, new information there, we'll bring that forward. Yes?
Is there a plan as to how often you take measurements of canopy cover? Say, if we, as a community, we set a goal of, we'd like, it's 48% according to this data. If we'd like to have 50% by some point, how often do you take that many?
Yeah, yeah. Frequently, cities are doing it about every 10 years. You know, there's an expense to it, and then there's the change is not typically that dramatic over, say, a two-year period that warrants that kind of project.
That type of policy would be included in the final plan here. So, it's not an official policy quite yet.
Right. It's highly likely that, you know, within the management plan, you would have cyclical updates of certain key benchmark information. And so, that way, it's planned for.
Just an observation, as you were saying, this data was collected 2015. And in Sammamish, it feels like, whether it's accurate or not, it feels like we're losing tree canopy rapidly. That's how, I think, as residents, we feel. And so, I think about information that come from 2015, to me, feels already outdated because of all the development we have had. And so, I'm a little concerned about that. And it may not be possible to have any more accurate information, given, like you say, it's an expensive thing to do, and maybe as a city, we can't keep paying for study after study after study to keep updating it. But I would, I'm kind of concerned that even though, you know, this is showing this information, this is probably no longer accurate, because in this city, two years can show a sweeping change in the loss of trees.
Right.
So, because we're a relatively small city, but, and our trees are very condensed and very, you know, densely found around the city. And so, when we have a development that goes in, next thing, boom, we lose a big section of trees. So, it's just a thought.
Okay. And, I mean, I think that's something, you know, again, we could do some work together, David, right, to say, how much do we know about development activity in the city? And maybe make comment to that in the report?
Yes. I definitely understand the concern about the data. 2015 was the latest that was available for us to do this project, so that's why.
But I wonder, I mean, I think it would be a heavy lift for the city to say, this is how many acres were turned over to development in the year 2017, right? Or would that be a difficult question to answer?
Not being a GIS person myself, I can't say conclusively, but I think it might be possible to, you know, make some estimate, because we have this as a layer on our GIS system now, and of course, we have all the development activity there as well. Can't promise anything, but, you know, that could also be part of the, part of the plan, is to say, you know, take whatever benchmark data you have and do your best to track it in that manner.
Provide some ongoing reporting, you know, like having, at the end of, you know, one thing we typically advise in a management plan is to have some sort of annual status report. And to say, to have in an annual report, you know, this many acres were converted to development, I mean, that, you know, it's public information, we're just putting it in a place that.
Yeah, because I think as a city, it's a very important, our tree management's a very important issue to our residents. And I think that's something that would jump out at a resident, would say, okay, that's a very nice 2015, but it's already 2018, and my neighborhood looks different than when I moved in.
Right.
So, I think it would be worth it if we could, if it's not like a huge, heavy lift on staff, if it would be possible to kind of, at least as footnotes, to say, you know, this information's 2015, and, you know, some acknowledgement to that, you know, to help citizens get an idea of kind of really where we stand right now.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's really important that people know that this is 2015, and it was 48%. Because people might say, wow, it's 48%. We're golden. You don't have to do anything, not realizing that three years have changed.
Right, right. Okay.
I would say, not to get too far ahead here, but if that's something that both of the commissions here are interested in, is making sure that this is updated on a regular basis, then you'll have the opportunity this fall, when we come forward with the draft goals and policies, for you to say, you know, we really prioritize having this updated as often as possible, or, you know, in this many years, or whatever. So, you will have the opportunity to make sure that that's a strong part of the plan.
David, is there somebody that takes notes for this meeting? I'm just, you know, because this is a good topic that I want to make sure we don't, I don't forget about either. Okay. Yes?
In looking at the potential for increasing, you said that the grass represents the, basically, the potential. How long does it take grass to become canopy?
Right. You know, we're often advising seven to 10 years. Functional maturity is 15 to 20 years. So, it does take, it is, that's why our management plans are typically drafted with a 20-year time horizon or longer, because you get planting now to see those results 20 years away. Bear soil is.
I think it seems obvious.
Dirt, yeah, it's dirt. And that's why, you know, some of these numbers are rounded, and so, it's like, you know, percentual UTC estimate, that's a rounded number. And so, bare soil, tree canopy, and grass, kind of, that's why I say it's kind of 60%, but it's like, you know, 60.15 or something.
Is it like in-between shrubs, or, I mean?
Yeah, yeah. It could be a dirt road going up someone's driveway, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Right, exactly. Yeah, construction sites definitely get picked up. Although, I recall seeing, I think, just in the upper right-hand corner as I was browsing it, and maybe this is a good time to switch into the story map.
Yeah, I think so.
Because we can really point it and explore the city. So, this is the, well, this is the slide to remind us to go there, and if you, we're going to make that link publicly available. I mean, it is available now. We're just not announcing it necessarily, but there's no password or anything to get into it. And we've done a couple of rounds of edits between David and I for, you know, grammatical and context, and all those edits have been done, David, so this would be the most current. It never fails when it comes time for a demonstration. That's why we work with PowerPoints. Sure.
I think it's still loading.
It never fails when it comes time for a demonstration. That's why we work with PowerPoints.
I think it does come to mind. And I think you acknowledge that. And I think you acknowledge that. Keep in mind that some of our park designs have.
Right, right, yeah. We're challenged typically in these management plans to communicate that theoretical maximum effectively, because we don't, you know, we don't want, or, I mean, it's fine if residents come, you know, start going to public meetings, saying, we want to see that 60%, we want to make that happen. But, you know, we want to communicate that, recognizing that if you make that happen, certain places that you see as meadow is going to disappear, you know? Yeah, they could certainly start with their front yard.
I was going to say, my, I had already written the question down, but the Director of Parks and Recreation made a real good point. And one of the reasons I stay with the Planning Commission is this topic, because I've looked forward to it for years and want to see it through.
Yeah.
I think it's great. Following what Angie said, I had written down, we should look at the wildlife corridors, you know, keep those, maybe even improve them, trails, retention ponds. There's a lot, I think right now, you're not supposed to plant too much in retention ponds that are trees.
Engineers typically don't like it.
Yes. So, I like that topic, and not only wait 20 years, but we'll have animals running back and forth for 20 years in their quarters.
Right, yeah. No, but I mean, like, we have heard, when we talk to staff in the Parks Department, that the, you know, that they get fee-in-loo trees, or, you know, like planting opportunities. I'm looking at you, Angie, like you, you know, but what we've heard is that, you know, they get this money, or they get trees to plant, but they don't know where to put them. So, one of the things that this project does, though, is perhaps give, you know, a theoretical spread of locations to consider, and a potential cap to say, okay, you know what, we can receive trees publicly, but we're going to have to maybe navigate sharing them to private properties if that's the direction the city wants to go. Okay? We're live. All right. So, this is the landing page. We've got this oblique aerial around the lakeside of Sammamish. On the left-hand side, you know, like it says, simply scroll through the pages. And so, if you're sitting with your mouse, you'll just sit with that scroll bar, and it'll scroll down to there, you know, introducing it. And essentially, the way we see the story map working for the city is ultimately becoming the, like, an executive summary to the Urban Forest Management Plan. So, at this point, it's introducing some of the results that I'm talking about here with you tonight, introducing them publicly. But by the end of it, these five or six panels will likely lead towards, here's our urban forest management plan, here are some of the main points out of it, you know, we invite you to come look and learn more, and participate in that way. Yeah, so, the very first thing it migrates into is the urban tree canopy. So, you can browse your way to your home, or if we want to go maybe to, you know, where we are right now at City Hall. You can see around it there how it picks up canopy, and you can, once you, can you zoom in right in as close as you can to City Hall? You get down to pretty grainy detail about what gets picked up. And there is some error rate in there, but, you know, you can visualize then as, where are we? That's City Hall there? Yeah, yeah. So, there, you know, some of the, like, the planter, you know, in the front there, picks up as a little bit of lawn and understory. If you go back out to the meadow, maybe, you can see where tree canopy is, you can see the paved pathways going through, you know, tree canopy, understory. And, you know, so that's that first landing page, and we've got, you know, most of the stats that I've provided with you here, the theoretical maximum, and some context with neighboring cities, and canopy goals, you know, a little suggestion from Dr. Greg McPherson about canopy goals, you know, being something that is really, it used to be that American forests, used to be, I'm thinking it was like 10 years ago, that they were really promoting all cities should pursue a canopy goal of 40%. And just said that flat out, right? And there's a lot of us in the forestry world that were asking, well, where did that number come from, or, you know, how did you get to that? And they've since just taken it back, and they're now going with it, it's really, you know, the city has to decide for itself what it wants to be. You know, having no canopy at all, nobody, people don't want that. They want some sort of nature around them. But, you know, for a city like Sammamish, you're a city inside a forest, you know, probably one of the few out there. The rest of them are forests, have forests inside their city, but you guys have a city inside your forest, pretty much. Yeah, so then you continue scrolling, and it just moves into the forest fragmentation. It kind of describes how forest fragmentation works to the benefit of wildlife. And again, so now you can visualize, you know, what, one of the odd results that came out of UW, and then it comes in here, is it shows these big, large patches called perforated canopy, when really, that perforated and core canopy, oh, actually, that looks like the colors on the legend there look a little backwards, because the perforated canopy and the core canopy are those, what is that, orange areas in the map? So, I'm going to, but I think that was one of those edits where the legend wasn't quite right, so I'll, we'll go back and circle back on that one. But you can sort of see that purple edge is what I was suggesting, is potentially, those are the, those could be places where, you know, maybe laminated root rot or forest health issues, those could be the hot spots, you know? Deeper into the forest, you're less likely to have, you know, or if it is a health issue inside the forest, that may just be a natural process that you want to let happen. But now you have this measurable area in the city that's to say, you know, we'll take on 10% of this area each year for the next 10 years, something like that. And then you're, you know, creating some sort of cycle of inspections potentially. But that's an early thought in the design of the plan. Yeah, so perforated canopy is where it's got little holes, it's got holes in the canopy. So, it might be, yeah, it might be a Ring of Douglas firs with a 10-by-10 gap in the middle that shines right to the ground. You know, so that would be, you know, where a squirrel can't jump from tree to tree, it would have to come down and come back up again, that kind of thing. But the results from UW are, they came back with a lot of perforated canopy, and in talking to our GIS staff, we're actually writing about it as core and perforated canopy together, because we don't think, you know, I don't want to criticize their job, but they did it pixelated, and where we do it object-oriented, our staff would typically merge those two together and not let so much get called perforated. So, then, yeah, so we scroll on, and we talk about some forest health issues, and so, this is where you have some more of that information. You know, maybe you want to zoom into a red area on that map, David, and you can sort of see, you know, like, there's a patch that maybe came in as critical or poor canopy. If you zoom in closer, you might get a sense of what's going on. But, you know, what it does allow the city to do is take a look at these areas and, you know, investigate them further, you know, to improve the quality of the canopy. I think you'll all have a lot more enjoyment just browsing this on your own down the road, if you're not already there. Yep. Yeah, and then street trees. So, this one, we took advantage of existing, so the Public Works Department did a remotely sensed tree inventory of their street trees, and it was, there's very limited information in there. Basically, it was this, a drive-by exercise, as I understand it, where they were grabbing, other things like signs and, and posts, and, but they were able to identify where, what was a city tree in the right of way. So, where you get, you get conifer and deciduous, those green and, and pink, or, pink dots, those are, those typically individual trees, and the clusters are, are clusters of trees. So, they didn't define how many were there. And so, when you zoom into some of those clusters, you'll see it's, it's more like a stagger of dot, and like every, every 50 feet or so, there's a, there's a regular sign of a cluster. So, it's, it's, it's kind of limited information, but it's, it's now, it's now there for, what, what will likely be advised in the plan is to, to pursue further inspection of the city's owned inventory. So, the city-owned trees, they should know, you know, the city should know the condition of these trees and have a plan to have routine inspections of them, have a little more information than whether they're deciduous or conifer, you know, essentially because the city carries some liability with these trees. So, having routine inspections is an important one, just for public safety. But, you know, in, in, in this essence, the city does have enough information to potentially figure out what the cost of, of performing a tree inventory is. A lot of cities go into these completely blind. They really have no idea how many public trees they're responsible for in the right of ways.
Can I just ask a question about the street trees?
Yeah.
It's just something I noticed driving around, and you may not be able to answer this question, but just as a resident, as I drive around, and especially in the fall, when utility companies are out and they're shearing back trees so that they don't impact power lines.
Right.
And they do this kind of strange kind of surgery on the trees.
Yeah, V-cuts, shelf cuts.
They're just like, right across. And they, to my mind, and I don't know anything about trees, but to me, they, they really just, they kind of butcher the tree. And I often wonder, I understand, you know, we all want power in January, so I understand why we're doing that. But I also don't understand why the power lines aren't buried underground, but that's another subject. And so, that's always something I find very curious, that, you know, we, and I know we have to balance tree management with modern living, but I do find that's a curious practice that we do. And I suppose the, the power company pays, they, they do that where the city doesn't have to pay them, I'm assuming, to come out and do that, because that's in their best interest as well, that those power lines are still connected. But I was just noticing also, the ratio between carnivores and deciduous. And it seems to me, in a lot, a lot of our streets, we plant deciduous trees. And I often wonder why. It must be just a cost thing. Because in the fall, all those leaves fall down and they block our drains. And then we have to have our staff go out and unblock the drains and suck up all the stuff out of their stormwater. And I wonder why we seem to prefer to plant those kinds of trees as opposed to our more native plants and more pine trees that don't do that. So, it's just kind of a point I just, it's always something that's always kind of, when I think about our tree management in the city, those are the couple of things that come to my mind. And I guess I just wanted to say it.
Is there anybody here connected with Public Works that can comment on it? Because I have a position on street trees, and, and like, I think it's a fair answer. You know, conifers, you know, when they're, when they're initially planted, they, they're right to the ground, they have, they have branching. So, it, it takes a long time for them to establish. And a lot of them are large stature trees, which aren't necessarily good in a, in an easement situation. So, a lot, so a lot of public works departments will plant deciduous trees, because they can go to the nursery, they can put them in the ground, they look, they look aesthetically pleasing right from the beginning. And there's room for that eight feet of clearance on the sidewalk and eight, and 15 feet on the road, you know, fairly quickly. So, that's, that's kind of the, the, the main, I think, driver for a lot of that.
I'd like to add to that, too, that coniferous trees do shed as well. People don't think they do, but the needles will drop, and they do not necessarily decay as quickly as deciduous leaves will either. Some of that is wrong plant in the wrong place, right? That initially, that tree shouldn't probably have been planted there. So, there are better species and varieties of trees to plant for that in the future, but it's a great observation and good questions, absolutely.
Reese is the question to me about the value of different trees and their water absorption.
Right.
Like, the conifers have a better water absorption than, like, the street trees.
Yeah, in the, in the, because of the winter time, where we get more rain here, sure.
So, do we, do you talk about that?
We, we do. We'll, we'll likely explore some of that. It's, it's, it would become part of the plan strategy to know more about what trees are performing well in the city, and how to, how to, how to best, you know, change, change the canopy so that it's maximizing its ecosystem services to the, to the community. You know, we, we talk about that in terms of like, if the majority of the, the city is Douglas fir, and, you know, and then you have some, a disease come through, it, it affects the stability of that entire canopy. You know, back east, they have issues with Emerald Ash Bore because they planted ash trees everywhere. And now they're, now their forests are decimated in, in the urban settings. So, yeah, looking at the, the quality of the canopy is kind of the next step. Yeah, and then, so then, yeah, the next slide that, that you can scroll through is detailing the parks. And on these ones, you can actually click, and even actually on the, on the previous slide, where you have the tree points, you can click on the point, and will tell you the tree information. So, if the city had more information about individual trees, it could be potentially communicating this, you know, in a public way. But there, you know, so an individual can click on it and, and learn a little bit about the canopy cover in that individual park. You know, and, and using the shading up above, the gradient, you can, you can sort of see which, which parks. I mean, the city's got a lot of really well-canopied parks, so it's not, not, there's not a lot of contrast there to see.
And Evans Creek Preserve is not within the city limits, so I assume it was not included in this, in this mapping?
Yeah, that's, that's the case. It was, it was just the, just what was, was in the city limits.
But certainly, there's the opportunity. I mean, I know there are intentional meadows there, but some very large meadows that there is an opportunity to...
So, it, it is, it's a park that's outside the city limits that you are responsible for managing, yeah.
Very incisible.
Yeah. Right.
And in addition to that, I mean, the Soaring Eagle Park is owned and operated by King County. I mean, it's, it's virtually, I don't know, I'm going to say, a very significant, high, high significant number of percentage of tree canopy, but outside the city limits, but certainly immediately adjacent to the city.
Okay, okay. Can you make a note of Evans Creek Preserve for me? Just say that we, yeah, like, we put, I think we, further down on the, on the scroll there, right? Yeah, Evans Creek is a city property excluded from analysis as it was outside city limits. You know, it's, it's, we, we've established some benchmark numbers here, you know, so, so if, if Evans Creek Preserve, you know, if you, if that, if that's a key piece of information that the city want, you know, feels like it's important to have that included into this, it, it would be an additional project. But there's ways, there's ways for the city to do it, you know, on their own, using just the, a statistical soft, the iTree Canopy software is freely available. You know, so there's that, and then it'll just throw out random sample plot, like, plots on a, on a, on a computer image, and it, you'll just say, "Is it tree or not tree?" And you'll do that with 50 or 100 iterations, and it'll come up with the, with the percentage of canopy that's inside that area. But, you know, for, for Evans Creek Preserve, I'm guessing it's probably in the 70 percent canopy category, right? Like, it's, it's mostly...
Yeah, a little more open space.
Yeah. Okay. Right. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So, what we're... Right. I guess what I propose doing, at least without further, you know, dialogue internally about the contract, is, is that we, we acknowledge Evans Creek Preserve in the plan, and just where, where we don't have data, we'll just say, "Well, we don't have data on it." But we can include the, certainly the area of the, of that property and make sure that it stays on the list and gets acknowledged. Oh, okay, okay. Okay, yeah.
Scott, again, the Director of Parks has brought up a subject, and I thought somebody else would ask this by now. You said the data was 2015, and I'm going to bring up the K-word now, is Kohani. So, that does not show in the data, but it does show on the graphics, correct?
It's included in the, it's included in the data.
Except...
Now, if you want to zoom in...
2015 would not have included...
I, I think that the images, the images are from 2015.
Right.
The analysis is not necessarily.
Oh, I, okay. Because it wasn't a park two years ago, is what you're telling me? Or it wasn't part of the city two, I gotcha, all right. Yeah, it has. Okay. What do we have? Tree benefits, right. So, yeah, citywide estimates that the residents get $4 million in benefits annually. And in addition to annual benefits, carbon stored by the current UTC contributes an annual, additional 28 million in benefits for a collective amount of about estimated 32 million. This is all from remotely sensed data. So, you know, one of the other things that we typically include in a plan is to, is to have more knowledge. Like, when you do a street tree inventory, you can get very specific, you know, valuations of your inventory. And a lot of that, a lot of that cost-dollar valuations, you, you then allow, allows you to compare your urban forest with other expenses on a city's budget. And, and, you know, consider the cost-benefit relationships there. Yeah?
So, it's $4 million of benefits annually is broken down there, and then it's a lump sum of $28 million of carbon storage, just...
Right, right. That's, yeah, that's, that's all in the wood. Yeah, and then, you know, so then, then the next few slides introduce, you know, where we're going. And so, these are, these are more like the, you know, priority planting areas. So, if you wanted to get, get to, if you wanted to get to the theoretical 60 percent, these are all the places that you would be planting. And where we, where we said, you know, very high priority planting areas, those are areas where there's a, there's a, it's a, it's an index of slope, forest fragmentation, and urban heat island effect. So, so between those three, you know, each potential planting space is kind of, is scored. And in that way, you can, you can say, "Well, if you want to maximize the benefits of the tree, these would be the best places to target to try to put a tree." Now, that does, I, I'm seeing it already with another client. It does create some conflict. It's like, if you zoom out, David, and go over to, towards Lake Samamish, you know, up along the, I keyed into these right away, these big patches of red there, you know, these, I believe, are neighborhoods where, you know, people aren't going to want to put trees there necessarily. Just my suspicion, but, you know, that's, so that's, that's where the, you know, some of this information has to be tempered and given some context, for sure. The next slide, yeah, and then, you know, UFMP's next step. So, you know, keep visiting this site, points to David Goodman, you know, we'll point, we'll, we'll, I, I'm not expecting there to be many more slides added to this, but there may be some more information that keeps it current. And, and this will stay on past the, the end of the project. So, this will be something that, that can be a point of reference for anybody who wants to begin learning about the, the urban forest in the city.
Could you give us that web address again?
Sure, yeah, and it's a, it's a long one.
Oh, I see. Oh, I'm sorry, I can see it at the top.
Yeah, GIS.Davy.com/storymap/Samamishwa. And then the, the end of it, you know, if you go, if you, if you just get that. But like David said, as soon as you're comfortable with it going public, it'll, it'll be, it'll just be a, a link that people click through on the city website.
It'll be public and probably promoted on city, you know, social media and website by the end of next week, probably.
Yeah, yeah, fairly soon.
So, I, I want to piggyback on Larry's question on the data. So, the data is collected in 2015.
Yeah.
And then, when you draw the map, you include Kohani. How do you get data for Kohani? Is that, is that just an estimate, or how?
Oh, well, so, so the, the, the image of the trees were there in 2015. It's just we defined what that area, that, that location is. So, if we were, if we were, if we were doing this study two years ago, that would have just come up maybe as private property canopy, all right? It wouldn't have shown up as park canopy or city responsibility canopy, because it was, it was parceled and owned by somebody else. That's my best guess, because I don't know the story of Kohani.
They're aerial photos, right?
Yes.
Maybe that's not what people are understanding. They, they fly the city, and they take aerial photos, and then they use that to compile the data.
Right. But, I mean, my next question would be, you know, do we know what the scope was? So, it's good that Kohani was included, but you know, I don't think it's intuitive to understand that Oklahani was included in 2015, even though it was not part of Samamish, right? So, I'm assuming that their coverage is, you know, you guys do like maybe five, 10 miles more than what the city limits are? Is that how, or is it like standard?
Well, no, we, we just do the analysis, right? We just clip right in the, right in the, in that city limits. And, and by, by we, it was, it was the University of Washington that did this work. So, they, they, but they, they, they clip the city limits right out of that, out of that image, and then start the analysis in there.
It might help to know where, the source of the information that was used for the tree canopy.
Sure. And, and I think that's available. The UDub provided a report. So, it's all that, and, and so it would be cited in the management plan.
I think what I'm getting at, I think my initial confusion over that was, was, I thought that the tree canopy assessment was going to be with current data, that, that new data would be gathered by this team. But I think I was confused, and you were using data gathered by an outside source, and you just plunked the city limits on it, and then did the analysis from within the city limits. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct. Obtaining LiDAR, our aerial imagery, is very expensive. And we actually partner with other cities to have King County do that work for us. But we will definitely source this, where the imagery is coming from. Obviously, it was collected in 2015. So, for the example of, excuse me, King County, is they will fly the whole region, which is why you're picking up Kohani, you know, even Isaguá, Bellevue, Kirkland, all of these areas. And then, as stated, we add our city boundary, including Kohani, and then we study that boundary, what's inside, so.
I think also, going forward, something that would be important to know, especially if this is a adaptive plan, where, you know, you have a plan, you try it, see if it works. I think it would be important to know more about the health of the forest, specifically in terms of invasives. Because LiDAR doesn't pick up which plants are good and which ones aren't. And we're getting more and more invasives.
And, and we have learned, you know, the Parks Department has done studies of their parks. The, the challenge of the city is to, to study the private properties. You know, you have to get special permission typically to trespass. And, and the best, the, the current best approach right now is, is to use iTree Eco. And, and so you throw these sample plots where whether it lands on public or private property, you, you, you measure everything in there, and you get a statistical sample of, you know, condition of private property trees, public trees, invasives. You, you just collect a dearth of information and maybe throw 200 of these plots around the city. I mean, that's, that's a whole nother project. Cities are doing that, and they get, they get a lot of good information from that. But then there's, there's other opportunities to engage volunteers. You know, and another thing that'll likely emerge from, from this plan is, is ways that the city can, you know, leverage citizen scientists. People, that's, that's all the rage now. People do want to report. They, they like to be able to talk, like, learn about what the issues are in the city, see if they see those issues in their yard, and communicate that back. And, you know, as long as those communication pathways are there, the city can know information.
Well, and I think a good source, or even a place to start with assessing the private property health is with HOAs.
Right.
Because, you know, you can approach a board and ask for permission to go on their properties.
Right, right.
And you can peek in yards and see what's...
You know, and, and perhaps, you know, future... And perhaps future developers would have to submit to an inspection of trees five years in or something like that. Like, you know, yeah, HOAs would be a great place to start. Okay? All right. We'll slip back to the slideshow and I think it goes back to you, David, right, to talk about some of the public outreach? Or... Well, okay. Shall I talk about this? And you can build off it. You want to take it? Okay. All right.
So just to give you a little bit of an overview of the type of public outreach you've been doing over the past couple of months. And I think you participated in a lot of these events, so thank you for doing that. We had three public engagement workshops. The first was led by Ian and the Davy crew. It was kind of just an introduction to urban forest management planning, why it's important. And we got some feedback from people about what kind of topics they were interested in and what their primary concerns were for the urban forest. We had one from the UW team who also worked on our canopy cover assessment. They gave a background on urban ecology and some of the science behind urban forests and what some of the challenges and opportunities are in related, specifically related to the urban forest.
Here in Samamish. We were at the city's Earth Day celebration, and we were also at two farmers' markets last month, including last May 30, when we had our photo contest finalists out. And I'll get to that in a second here. But we had over 200 people cast votes on the photo contest and also engage with us on our boards over there, which I encourage you to take a look at if you have the chance to. So those are really successful. We got a really broad range of opinions from people. And it was really great to kind of hear what their concerns were and what they wanted the plan to focus on. We also, as you may be aware, held a forest photo contest. So I want to credit Ian and the Davy group for coming up with the idea, which was originally about, let's get some images from people to put in the plan when we eventually finalize the plan. But it actually kind of turned into this much bigger thing where we ended up getting almost 100 people submitting photos. We got over 250 images. And we actually engaged with people much more broadly than we would if we just asked, what your opinion on tree retention policy is. So I think we're going to try to apply this to some other plans, but we were really, really pleased with how this ended up. In addition, we managed to snag a partnership with the Arts Commission, who not only connected us with a professional photographer who lives in Samamish, who helped us select our photos to be finalists in our competition, but they also are going to host an exhibit here in City Hall from July through September, I think, of 20 juriedelected photos. And there's going to be an opening reception for that on July 25 in the evening, which I hope many of you can attend. And I also just want to shout out, they're not here, but our communications team, Kelly Stickney and Sarah Kimsey, did an awesome job promoting this and really kind of took this to the next level. So I'm just going to go through, I'll show you our 10 finalist photos, so you can see the kind of the quality and diversity of the photos that we got. And it was hard to pick just 10, so luckily we're going to get to show 20 or a little more over the summer. But, yeah.
That one we figured was a drone.
Yes.
And this looks like a winter photo, and those are deciduous trees, not dead trees.
Isn't that Evans Creek?
Yeah.
Oh, that's wonderful.
That's Evans Creek, too.
Really? Okay.
Do you remember that? Right.
See, look at the meadow.
Yeah, there's a lot of potential there.
Okay, so this one, not this one, but the next one I'll show here was our online voting winner. Not a huge fan of bugs, but I guess it is a good photo. Not saying I'm not important, just saying I'm not a huge fan. And then this next one was our in-person voting winner. And the photographer came up to us at our showcase over here last farmer's market and told us the whole story about it. So hopefully she'll be able to come to the reception and share that as well. Apparently she was just sitting on her patio and this guy or gal showed up. So this was just really successful. I mean, we're really proud of this, and I hope you all will come to the exhibit in July.
And just to say, that is a bobcat, not a gator.
Correct, yeah.
Not a gator either. Yeah. Frequently when we write these plans, there's a lot of white space as you try to place and make things graphically appealing. Having pictures like this that are inspirational are really phenomenal. And we're going to start suggesting this with a lot more of our clients if they're willing to go down this road. Because not every plan has really great pictures. But when you ask for pictures from photographers, they get very excited. So it's worked out really nice.
Question?
I was just thinking, I know this is out of your...
Oh, give me a try. It's okay.
...plan you do, but borders of urban forests are really important in terms of pollinators and bird life and animal life. So you just don't want a mass of trees because you also want to have some edges.
Edge, edge forest, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't hear many cities saying, well, we're going to plant our forest to encourage more edge effect. You know, it's something that...
Like pollinator pathways.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, with that forest fragmentation map, you could then look at it in perspective of any specific kind of animal and say, is this going to meet the needs of this habitat that you're trying to encourage?
So I'm just throwing that out.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's important to say. Thank you.
So now I'll turn it back over to Ian, who will take you through our survey results as well.
Okay. So...
I'd like to add a comment to what Cheryl just said. Not only is it edges, but it's meadows and a balance between different kinds of ecosystems that we need... We're losing something if we just think that it all needs to be forest.
Right.
So that needs to be measured against, I guess, carbon sequestration. Is that the ultimate? Is that what we're trying to achieve? Or do we need to look at the balance of all the ecosystems?
Right, right. Well, and I think that's, some of the stuff we were pushing for in the survey is what does the community want this city to be, right? Because if the community came back and wanted that kind of diversity, you will hear more about that. In the urban forest, I think the biggest issue is not just the transition between meadows and forest or the amount of edge, but the amount of roads that you have that create, that fracture the canopy and create corridors that animals can't pass by or won't pass through. So it's more challenging in an urban setting to build wildlife habitat than anywhere else, I can imagine.
It's not just wildlife either. Part of it in a city is going to be human habitat.
Right.
And that's kind of tough when you have to have Douglas firs all around your house in the wintertime especially. So that's a consideration. That's a minus. It may be a bigger plus, but it's a minus.
Right. And, well, I'm a couple of slides away from, I think, talking to that issue. In the survey results, we had 331 responses over seven weeks, and I credit the city for doing a lot of the outreach to get responses in. That's, in my experience with the projects that I've done, that's a good response rate for this kind of survey. The survey closed, and then we had to prepare the slideshow. So I actually haven't done... We're going to write more about it in the plan than what we've got here, but we've kind of pulled some of the highlights. So trees are important, the quality of life in Samamish, 98% strongly agree. And any of the public workshops that we did, hands down, everybody sees trees as important to the city. But we ask what is the most important benefits to citizens? And that gives us a sense too of, why is it the trees are important to you? And how can we respond to that? And people come off wildlife habitat, slowing runoff, so stormwater relationships and wildlife are probably some of the bigger issues. Air quality, people recognize that that is also important, why we value trees. Want to move to the next slide? Does Samamish need more public trees? 81% agreed or strongly agreed with that. And where they wanted to put them? They said streetscapes, parks, and commercial areas. And I roll that off quickly here because the... Oh, I went too fast. It was... You know, I heard, what I wanted to say was, I heard anecdotally, a lot of people come up, and just as you mentioned, or one of you were mentioning, the change over the last two years of developers. A lot of people say, oh my gosh, the forest is getting cut down because I drove by and it's now not a forest anymore, it's a development. Well, you know, that is probably why they're saying we need more public trees, because they're really close in contact to us. And it may or may not be that the city can actually handle more public trees. But I think that's the reaction, right? And we know we have enough and we know we need fewer. I think those are... I'm curious to dig into some of those comments. And we usually, in the plan, there'll be an appendix that kind of lists all the responses and the comments and everything like that. So if you're ever curious why people say what they do, you may get more in there. Yeah, you want to go to the next slide? And stop me if you want questions and want to dwell on any of this. What is your satisfaction level with the care of public trees? 58% said satisfied. And I like this question because I think this is a good benchmark question for the future in the city as the city becomes more engaged. Do people still feel the same way five years from now with the plan implementation? Or is there issues? And I think you get people, when they express dissatisfaction, they may have had, they may have, like, how often do you encounter trees blocking the right of way, trees with poor structure, trees in poor health? The choices were actually like every day, once a week, once a month. And I often say, well, what is it? What happens when a person passes by that every day? Well, a person passing by a city tree that's got a defect in it, that they're worried is going to fall and hit a car, and maybe they've reported it. And yet they go by, and week after week, the city can't make it a priority to fix that. That helps gauge some of this stuff. So most of the time, the vast majority never have any, never see any issues with public trees, but there are some people that are seeing it. And so you get, again, a benchmark of how the city is doing with the care of trees. Want to go to the next slide? Awareness of city tree regulations. What is your awareness of city tree regulations? People say that they're aware from personal experience and news articles, but I think the bigger number there is like 20% is not aware of any regulations at all. And maybe, over time, I think you want to change that to say, oh, I'm well aware of how the city is taking care of the trees because I go to their website and I picked up a brochure at City Hall, and those kind of things. And what is your experience with city tree regulations? I was surprised to see no opinion because the people that say they're difficult and too strict are showing up at public meetings, right? And, you know, it's been interesting in the anecdotal discussions. A lot of people, their encounter with the city tree regulations are that they were designed for, to manage developers so that kind of encouraged developers to try to retain trees and make it more strict for them. But because they're a homeowner, their tree is now impacted. And their tree was planted next to their home in the 1960s and is now huge, and it's not a suitable spot for the tree anymore. It's not a suitable spot to replace with a tree. So I would hear those kind of stories. That's something that I think we're struggling with, how to best present that kind of issue in the plan. And it's not uncommon for cities to... You have one code that works for everybody, but it really, everybody wants the developers to slow down, but they want to have the freedom to do what they want in their yard. It's a difficult balance, for sure. Want to go to the next one? So, yeah, some ideas that we've proposed in the survey, an arborist business license. 83% said yes, or maybe with conditions. Punitive policies for violations. Most people felt comfortable with the city punishing or having policies that are punitive. And a special property tax for urban forestry, 68% yes, or maybe with conditions. Again, I don't think that that's a blanket opportunity for the city to charge a special tax, but it does mean that people are open and supportive to making sure that urban forestry activity can be properly funded, I think. Next slide? Okay, yeah. So residents, the top concerns for trees, yeah, healthy trees being removed during development. They were invited in order of importance, right? So that's why you get these 200 and 100. We had 300 respondents, and the majority of those 300 said healthy trees during development was the top concern. But wildlife habitat, I think as many people in Samamish that love their trees, they also love the wildlife here. They want to see the bobcats moving through the neighborhood. I talked to one woman who's spearheading outreach for bear awareness because bears are in the city. I mean, I hear about it in Shoreline occasionally, but here, I think it's a lot more common. People are concerned about loss of wildlife habitat, canopy loss, but less so for the safety hazards and then the issues of trees, debris in my yard, blocking my view. I'm working with the cities of Edmonds right now, and this really is mostly flip-flopped. Trees blocking my view is the huge issue in the city of Edmonds and their bowl area. And it's creating a dramatically different result as far as the plan goes. Yeah, you want to go to the next slide? That's it, eh? For the survey? Okay. And so then we're on to where we are through the summer. David?
Ian, sorry. I want to follow up on the right of the slide on taxation and what Commissioner Garrison said. It struck me that, again, there's the book out there, The Hidden Life of Trees. And one of the things that was, I didn't see, was the physical and mental healthy benefits of trees. I think it's in there, but that's important. And what I made a note, especially after Jane's comments, it's probably too late to have nature take care of itself. We're trying to take care of nature. And so the trees and the plants and the animals are, they're going to have, not an argument, but they're going to have difficulty going the way nature intended. So it looks like the parks are a real great thing because we talk about in transportation that everybody lives within walking distance of a bus stop. Hopefully, within the city of Samamish, we will be able to provide... Apartment buildings are not going to have a lot of trees around them. But a healthy place where a citizen can, or anyone can walk to for those benefits.
Right. And I think, and the only reason, Larry, that you're not seeing the benefits of, the health benefits kind of being highlighted as brightly, is that it's not currently being well modeled. There's early scientific research coming out that is demonstrating that it has value, then there's everybody's intuitive feeling about it. But we're trying to stick with at least some of the nationwide best practices that are the best available science on trees. A lot of it's really around those ecosystem services. But, yeah. Certainly, yeah, planning for apartment buildings with easy access to nature, that's an amazing feature that this city can offer. It's going to be difficult in other cities. So then, going into next steps, shall I just walk through?
Sure.
Yeah, well, we've closed... Yeah, well, you know, we've closed on the survey, we've had all our open house meetings, but we're meeting with you folks today. We're engaged with the city staff, we've done all our interviews at this point, but, like, David's kind of filtering as I have follow-up questions, I start writing the plan, and I was like, "Well, you know, would this be an accurate representation of the city's position on A, B, or C?" And so we're working with staff through the summer to draft the plan, and we're going to have an update with city council, right? I forget.
July 9th.
But that's, you and I are going to be there for that, right. And then, and then we're going to the fall with more goal settings and presentations. The story map, I think we've got it out there, but like I said, it's probably going to be able to, for the public to view sooner, but well, it'll be in its sort of final form, you know, as we get the goals set in there, and we kind of turn that story map page as a link that feeds into the draft plan that people can review and consider and comment on. And then into the future, you know, we'll negotiate in 2019 with commissions again and council to proceed with plan implementation.
So, if I could just clarify, so the next time we'll be seeing you, we're coming back to the planning, or, excuse me, the Parks and Recreation Commission on September 5th, and we'll be with the Planning Commission on September 20th. And at those meetings, we'll have a first draft, just text, not any of the formatting bells and whistles, so just the text of the entire plan, so that includes all the background, all the goals, and all the policies. So that'll be everybody's first opportunity to start to shape what the plan is going to look like. We're also going to go to city council in October, and then, once we get, we're going to take all of the feedback that we get from those meetings, and then move it into a more final-looking document that we'll get a second review towards the end of the year, and then into the early part of 2019. And then we'll be moving towards adoption with the council, probably in February, March.
Again, I was very interested in this. One of the things that I remember hearing in management, and I think the Park and Recreation Department does this a lot, you stop every now and then and celebrate, whether it's a success or a big success. And I think Davies and the city staff and every, and the photo contest, what a good representation, and I know it's a spoiler, but not for everybody, but I think the Iskwa Sammamish Reporter tomorrow's edition, June 22nd, will have a feature on the photo contest.
Oh, marvelous.
I believe. So, anyway, please celebrate. You said Davies might take this on as a little box and what we can offer.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, no, exactly, yeah, yes. All right, yes.
In terms of the plan, what are we talking about, like, for example, Sammamish may consider increasing their plan by fifteen percent in these areas, like in this park or that park?
Yeah, so.
I mean, is it going to be that?
I think, I think that target number is going to be up to the city. Like, you know, I'll likely propose that we endeavor to maintain the existing canopy, that would be my initial foray into this. And then the city can say, say, "You know what? It's in our comp plan to enhance the canopy. I think it's, I think it's up on the wall there," or, no, sorry, not, that's just that you guys, the council engaged it, but there, right.
There's a comp plan.
I might be getting muddled, I might be getting something muddled here, but.
There's a comprehensive plan policy that says, I think, something like, keep and maintain the city's forested character, something to that effect.
Right, right, so, you know, so we're usually going to build off of those existing policy documents and then try to.
I guess I was going to say, is it more conceptual, the plan, or is it actually more action items?
Oh, you know, it's, it becomes a plan goal. And then, and then the action items are recommend, we'll recommend action items that will support that plan goal. So if it is increasing canopy, we'll have a bunch of proposed action items in there, but it can be an adaptive management plan, so if those action items a year from now are not, are not working, or proven out to be impossible, then they don't, they'll pursue something different. But it's, it's the city, you know, if city council adopts the plan, then they're saying, "You know what? City staff, we want you to move in a direction that moves the needle, so that 10 years from now, it's not forty-eight percent, it's forty-nine percent." But, you know, what we're trying to avoid is that, you know, you get, mayor's not here, but, you know, you can have a mayor say, "We want a million trees," in the city, is what LA did, which is a great stump position, but then the city staff turn around and go, "Oh, my gosh, how are we going to make that happen?" You know, and so we're trying to temper expectations a little bit, maybe, in the plan as well, to make conversation efficient and collaborative.
And I'll just add to that. So how this will work is we'll have the plan itself, and then we'll have a separate document, the implementation strategies. And, for example, you know, the plan may have goals, those broad goals, and then this implementation strategy would be very specific. And the city uses these strategies to allocate funds in their annual, or their biannual budget. And so it's, it's really important for us to have some specific strategies in there with some, you know, high-level planning estimates, so that the plan, or the city council can use that when they're doing their budget.
Okay, thank you. Because I just kind of wanted to know.
I would, I would think of the urban forest management plan as sort of a comprehensive plan, but for trees, so you wouldn't necessarily look to it for your day-to-day management ideas and things like that, but it's just about setting goals and, you know, providing the city council some direction, where if they want to achieve those goals, these are the things you might want to do.
Right, right.
It's.
It won't be a surprise, two years from now, if city staff are asking for money to do something that promotes, you know, promotes activity in the plan that the plan was approved for. That's kind of how it's going to work.
So, I have a question for Davie Tree Service.
Oh.
With global warming, we're seeing that a lot of the natives can't tolerate the new urban, or urban conditions now. And I've had a lot of my big old Douglas firs die in my yard, and I'm having now to water them, big old trees, which, if that continues, is Davie going to give us substitutes or species that will tolerate what's coming?
Yeah, it won't necessarily come from Davie, but the nursery, the nursery industry, I think, is out in front of that, is recognizing that, you know, there's increasing the number of trees that would do well, you know, in the California climate, you know, or, like, I'm imagining 50 years from now, Gary Oaks will be maybe a little more common, you know, but for that to happen, that means you're planting Gary Oaks 10 years from now, you know, like, it, the real issue is, like you said, the Douglas fir are at risk now, you know, the, and knowing that, you know, your canopy is at forty-eight percent, but it may have nothing to do with development that changes it, it could entirely be climate change, and so you have to, you do have to know with the species composition in the canopy. And, and I think the city is going to be moving towards a more diverse canopy, species distribution. You know, homeowners would talk to me at the farmer's market, and they'd say, "Well, you know, make sure, you know, we want more of the Douglas firs, we want more of the native, the native trees in our right-of-way," as Royzen discussed, right? You know, but the reality is, for a healthy urban forest, you really want a diversity of trees, so that when a certain insect outbreak happens, it affects only a portion of your population.
Can I make one quick comment? I would just encourage you to be cautious in that this is all useful, good information for us, but we should be keeping an eye on how this information could get used by others as well. So, you know, in the comments about the opportunity to plant trees in Evans Creek Preserve, I can see a developer coming in and saying, "Look, here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to clearcut this 30 acres, but in order to offset that, I'm going to plant 30 acres of trees in Evans Creek Preserve." That's not what we want.
Right.
We don't want concentrations, we don't want people to use this data in the wrong way, or, and I think Sammamish is a little unique because of the tremendous development pressure for particularly residential neighborhoods, where that's what they want to do, they want to clearcut everything, and they will look for a way to offset their activity. And this information shouldn't be used, or we should be cautious to make sure that it doesn't get used in a way that's contrary to what the intent is, and we need to keep an eye on that.
I was thinking about the sub-basins layer that is on the story map, is that the city could actually, instead of setting just an overall city canopy goal, is that it wants to improve the health of certain watersheds. And that would, that would be a way to say, you know what, you, Mr. Developer, Mrs. Developer, are in a, an area of town where we are anticipating increasing canopy, we're not going to let you do the work that you want to do there, you know, or if you're planting trees, it has to be there, because it's, we're changing the health of that watershed, and we can't send it over to Evans Creek Preserve. Yeah, yeah, but I recognize that, and it's, again, something difficult, we want to be as open as possible to the entire community.
Okay, thank you very much. Good, healthy discussion. We need to leave a little bit of time for public comment tonight.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much, Ian.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, I will open public comment. Is there anyone in the public that'd like to speak this evening?
Yeah. I'll go ahead. Whoops.
Just remember to state name and address.
Sure.
And speakers do have seven minutes to speak if they like.
I will make it a lot shorter than that. 228 Avenue Southeast. And Commissioner O'Farrell mentioned trees, tree canopy loss, by information from 2015. I went in and looked at the IPIC work that the staff did in 2015 using 2013 info, and our city had a forty-six percent canopy, so it's interesting, but I do think that is important information. For any of you who are not aware, and it's not a real large deal, but I do have a history in this, I have a, I went to college at the University of Montana, and School of Forestry, have a, you know, background in resource conservation and land use planning, and have worked for the state of Montana a number of summers and during internships, so have a little history on urban forestry and care deeply about urban forestry. I think it's awesome for our community. I'm going to give you a little surprise, that, I won't use the word shocking, but I don't think it's what you're going to expect to hear. A lot of you in this room know that I've been working on a cause in Sammamish about housing, to, in essence, optimally bring housing in the city into balance, with less single-family homes and more multifamily, based on needs and wants, not on a guess. What does it mean to urban forestry? It means over 500 acres of R4 and R6 and R1 lands not subdivided, not built, actually, specifically to, in our single-family areas, I'm suggesting to the city council, and by the way, I've met with all the council members over the last few weeks and gave them a very specific plan. So I'm going to share just the, the only parts of that that I'm going to share today are the parts that deal with the environmental sections, but it does have massive advantage for, you know, people, and transportation, and money, and community character, and the region, and for the environment, just huge advantages and values across the board. For the environmental aspects of this, you know, particular plan, which is to lessen how many more single-family homes we built that are large, because the city has an oversupply relative to internal needs, not regional needs. In that regard, the specific thing that I have, have here for them, which I'll share with you soon, is that that would keep over 500 acres from, from being subdivided, I'll spit out the D, over time. The city would get over 150 million in income that it's not expecting, much of which could go to things like the Emerald Necklace, to open space acquisition, the parks maintenance. There'd be eight to nine million fewer square feet of impervious surface, more room for tree planting and restoration without having to go outside the city limits, and a much more successful urban forestry plan, having 500 acres or more to work with that we're not counting on, and at the same time, be able to meet growth targets that are going to be increasing in a way which is advantageous to our community, to fill needs that we have in centers, and meet long-range regional growth, and have it all be advantageous to our community. So I've tried to stay on, on the urban forestry side of things, and I am going to hand out a little information about the sort of top-level housing balance that I'm working on, but it's not the specifics that I gave the council, but for you in the room that have not seen this, it's just a couple pages of information about the overall, what it means, and the policy reasoning behind it. So that's it.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Victor?
Hello, my name is Mary Victor, and I live at 408-208th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish. Thank you so much for the great presentations and the work, and I think the photo stuff you guys did was really awesome. I did not submit one, but I really enjoyed looking at them and voting. On trees, trees intercept water, they have roots, they use water, they're super important for stormwater, but I'm going to try to talk more about the trees and the canopy, and some of the things I think the urban forestry needs to deal with. First, I really think the city used to have Kathy Curry, who was a biologist, and we don't have an arborist, and I really think that's a missing piece of our city that needs to get done. I think one of the first public comments you guys had on urban forest from someone in the public was, "We need to look at that." The second thing is, is for the aerial photographs, King County did do a new LiDAR in 2016, and Dennis Higgins, a couple times ago, had said they're starting.
Mary, can you just back up a little bit?
I don't know how to get rid of that, a little bit farther away. King County does have LiDAR, and I think they're trying to implement it so that it can be used. And we had submitted, I believe, council people and also public input, saying, "We really need to have a leaf on and a leaf off, look at the canopy." I remember one of the planning commission meetings, Chair Collins had actually submitted a question because she wasn't at the commission, but the planning commission talked for probably over an hour on, should we have 70% or how much deciduous, how much evergreen, what should it be around parking lots and all that, and I think it's super important. And then even in places where you're happy to have open spaces, I've heard from parks commissioners that sometimes we need to have shade trees. So in the summertime, when people want to go out there with their kids and play, and it happens to be those 90-degree weeks, that they can still enjoy the places, there might be evergreens around, but where the open spaces are, at least we need deciduous trees for that. I had also spoken with Ian at the last farmer's market, if you look at the 2016 Stormwater Comprehensive Plan that was adopted, it actually says, one of the goals is to have an expanding canopy. So to have an expanding canopy, you can't be losing trees if you're taking them away, you have to be replanting as they fall, that get diseased, you have to do something, and you have to look at where you're adding, which I liked your highlighted pictures. But I think the Stormwater Comp Plan, if you just search for the word trees, you can find some of those things. A couple times, the UW people, I went to their open house night, I don't know if their report is available to us online, it'd be cool if we could see it, like, when you release this stuff. I had really liked the information that they had. And the biggest thing that I remember them saying is the lady that spoke, she said, "What is very different about our city versus all the other cities is that we allow development that really clears and scrapes all the land, and we're very unique in that, and it really shouldn't be like that, and that needed to change." And I think Mark Baughman just spoke about clearing and grading, and that you're taking everything away, and I think the challenge for the city is we need to do some things like that, I believe, on the, for 2018, they are supposed to have 21A, which is the environmentally code, and the 19A, which is the development code, that's supposed to be getting looked at. But I think it's really important to look at all the things that's happening, where it is, there are environmentally critical areas. Also, if you're doing development, I think those areas that would get developed, like the critical areas have to be marked off before the development happens, during the site plan, and they have to be preserved so that you don't end up. site plan, and they have to be preserved so that you don't end up where the wetland is destroyed before the people know. And so that's like one of the code things. The other thing is, is steep slopes are 40% or more. Those need to be properly identified by maps and definitions in the city. And even though they're 40%, I still think at 20% and 10%, you have to look at the vegetation because there is a soil creep. You can call it shift happens if you want, but it kind of makes things move down, and you'll end up with a tree that ends up being pistol gripped over time. And if we allow blackberries, or there's blackberries in those areas, they knock out everything else, and you're not really providing the protections. And according to the 2015 Comp Plan, steep slopes and wetland areas are supposed to limit development. So I think you need to look at, how can those areas be bolstered up? And if you look on the green map, you'll see a lot of the green where it's really saved, but you'll see a gap, Inglewood and just south of that, that have been developed really strongly, and they don't have the trees. And I think something needs to be done. And Ian had actually brought that up, just as an independent person, I talked about him with that at the farmer's market. So I think those are some of the things we need to look at. I've learned, I wanted to thank the habitat people, I've learned a lot about what native plants are and what they do, and I think it needs to go wider. And I remember Kathy Lowe telling me, if a tree dies, it'll stand there as long dead as it is alive. We need those. And there was recently on Lewis Thompson Road, right up by Montage, a woodpecker had been going at this power pole, like huge things. And they've replaced the power pole, and you can't pick anymore, but where's the woodpecker picking now? I mean, we need to have snags and things, and there are trees dying, but if we're getting rid of those, that's part of the habitat. So I think how the animals can connect, how the people can connect, how the stormwater ponds can be linked, where the trees are, and dealing with steep slopes and things, I think those are super important because trees intercept water, they don't let it get to the ground, it evaporates, and the transpiration pulls a lot of it. And I think the amount of evergreens that we have versus deciduous really needs to be looked at. So I'm super interested in leaf on, leaf off, which I have not heard in the meeting today. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment.
Sharon Steinbus, 24933 Southeast 14th Street, Samamish. Had a couple of comments. One, I think it's a good point about this being 2015 data. I know there's a 10-acre parcel next to Inglewood Junior High that is currently labeled the Trillium subdivision, but that's, there's 10 acres that's going to go to development. We've, the developer's already given us permission to go in there and salvage plants. So there's an opportunity to kind of replace those plants, move them someplace else in the city. I'm interested in the grass. We have a lot of old D9-level stormwater ponds in the city that are currently mowed, they're grass. But I know the Stormwater Department is working on a strategy to restore those stormwater ponds, possibly with native plants. There's a lot of trees that the USDF classifies as trees being over 20 feet at maturity. I know when we did Earth Day, the Habitat Group gave out some trees that the National Wildlife Society funded. And those trees, for example, are native plants, so we don't always need to replace our trees, for example, with cedar or dog fur. We can replace them with things like Indian plum, which is a beautiful plant, one of our first blooming trees, service berry, which is another white-flowering beautiful plant, has fruit for wildlife, and our Pacific rhododendron as well. Evans wanted to make a comment about Evans Creek. I know we planted some giant sequoia in Ebright Creek, and we had irrigation there. And one of the problems, we had talked about planting the giant sequoia in Evans Creek, and one of the problems with Evans Creek is there's no irrigation. So that was one of the problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who else would like to speak tonight? Okay, so I will close the public comment section of tonight. And the next item of business is adjournment. So if there is no further public comment, then...
Chair, should we adjourn, but set a time when we will recontinue the planning mission?
Oh. I'll give you a five-minute break. I do need a motion to adjourn. If someone can provide that. There's a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. And the meeting is adjourned, and it is 6:38. So we'll meet back at 6:50 for planning commissioners.
Thank you.
Because the staff will need to change something.
I was teasing you.
That's more than five minutes.
Hey, you like to tease Larry.
Okay, good evening. I call the regular planning commission, oh, sorry, Cheryl. Oh, geez, how dare her. I said 6:50. I'm just kidding. I'll wait. You know what, Cheryl, I'm going to start anyway because we have to approve our minutes and stuff. So I think we'll be okay. Okay, I'll do that again. I call the planning commission regular meeting to order at 6:51. It is Thursday, June 21st, 2018. We are located here in the council chambers at Samamish City Hall. The next item of business is roll call, so I'll start on my right. Rituja.
Rituja in the room.
Mark Baughman.
Jane Garrison.
Shannon Collins.
Larry Crandall.
No Pharoah. Okay, so, yeah, what is it, three, four, five, seven? No, we're missing Eric, so we have six. So we have six commissioners present tonight. Eric Brooks is absent, and we definitely have a quorum. So the next item of business is approval of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to check out the agenda? Oh, I do have a change. I move to remove the public comment at the end of the agenda because we have both public hearings, and the people who are going to speak on an agenda item should speak during those public hearings. And I'll use it as an opportunity to say that we will have two public hearings tonight. The first public hearing will be on the Comp Plan amendments, the second one will be on the actual code amendments. So make sure, I mean, you're welcome to speak at both public hearings, but if you have more comments that are related to the code amendments, then wait for that public hearing. If you have more of the Comp Plan amendments, wait for that public hearing. So I move that we eliminate that second public comment agenda item from the agenda.
I second that.
There's a motion and a second to remember, remove the second public comment item. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. And the public comment section will be deleted from the end of the agenda. So the next item of business is approval of the minutes, and these are the June 7th minutes. This is the planning commission meeting where we had the panel vote. Are there any amendments from the other commissioners? All right, so I found the paragraph under Old Business. There's just something going on. Kevin, you might just want to take a look at it. It starts with like page five of 22 Housing Strategies, Old Business Number Two. I think it may be a cut-and-paste error. Take a look, and just edit as you see fit. Then also, I was wondering if you could put the names and organizations of the folks who spoke at our panel in that section? Because that was such a good panel, and such good discussion came from it, and I want anybody who looks at the minutes to know that we were able to speak with those people because I think that's really important. So I move that we make the changes I just said.
I second that.
There's a motion and a second to make the changes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, so the minutes will be approved as amended. We didn't approve them, we just amended it.
Yes.
Okay. So can I have another motion to approve the minute?
I would now approve the minutes of the meeting as amended.
A second. There's a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no.
I'm going to approve but abstain because I wasn't at the meeting, but it was a great meeting, what I observed online. So, great, great job.
Thank you. Okay, so the minutes will be approved as amended. The next item of business is, I guess it's public comment, isn't it?
I heard, public comment, I won't take too long. It just seems being, after this last feel-good meeting, it's been a feel-good week, and at the last study session of the Samamish City Council on June 12th, there was a lot of positive reference to the work and effort that the planning commission has been doing, especially on, they put into the sign ordinance, and the council felt that, a couple of comments on, we like this advice, let's not be second-guessing. And hopefully tonight, after listening to public input and having in-depth discussion on the subject, we can unanimously agree on the motions before us, then we can move those on to city council. And also, in that line, on the June 19th meeting, city council approved the recommendations of the planning commission on the sign ordinance, and one of them was the electronic reader board. And I'll go just end up with that because maybe I am kind of excited, especially about urban forest management plan. But I wanted to let it be known that I am thoroughly enjoying my involvement on the planning commission, and come this January, hope to be reappointed to the planning commission to see things like urban forest management through. Okay.
Glad we could be here for you, Larry.
Okay, so I'm opening the public comment, but this is the non-agenda public comment. So is there anyone who'd like to speak on a non-agenda item? And tonight's only agenda item is traffic and currency and the updates to the plan and the code. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on a non-agenda item? No. Okay, so that is no. So there will be no public comment on non-agenda item tonight. So the next item of business is Old Business. And tonight, we have public hearings, like I talked about, public hearings and deliberations for the comprehensive plan amendments and the code changes related to transportation concurrency and level of service. So before I hand it over to staff, I wanted to communicate with the commission, what I plan to do tonight is hear the presentation from staff, allow any questions related to the presentation, or any questions that came up while you were, you know, reviewing the material. I will open the Comp Plan public hearing first, then we'll close it, then we'll deliberate, and we'll have a vote on the Comp Plan amendments. Then we'll, I'll open the public hearing for the code amendments, close it, we'll deliberate, and then vote. And when we deliberate, that's the chance, if there's anything you want to change or add, it has to be specific, but if there's anything you want to change or add, that's the time to suggest that you have an amendment and say, "I move to do this." And then we can second it, talk about it, vote on it, et cetera. So the first part, staff presentation, questions, and then when we deliberate, that's really the chance to go into it if we need to. So that's what I wanted to say. And with that, I'll turn it over to Cheryl.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, planning commission and members of the public. My name is Cheryl Paston, and I am the deputy director for Public Works, and to my right is Kendra Breeland. She's our lead consultant with Farr and Peers, that have been helping us for over a year now on this project. What, I just wanted to add to the schedule of events tonight to Shauna, so we did get a number of questions that came in this morning, so we will be answering them at the end of our presentation. So just to let you know when we'll cover those. At the dia, she should have an eight and a half by 14. These are just the questions that came in today. I didn't copy all of the other questions that are in your packet, so that's why this isn't, you know, 12 or 15 pages. Again, it's just the questions that came in today, and those are the ones we'll go over after our presentation. But if you have questions during the presentation that wasn't sent in from today, please feel free to interrupt us, and we'll definitely answer them. So tonight, we're just going to give a really short history of the project background. All of you have heard this before, but just as a review, and of course, for the community that hasn't heard this. Talk a little bit about what the council's transportation priorities are, talk just on a few slides on the city's transportation, level of service, and concurrency program. Give you a really high levels calendar of work that's been done to date, and then the next steps. Again, in there, right before, after the next steps, we'll go over the Q and A. So the project background goes back a little over a year ago, where there were just a number of needs regarding the city's transportation system. And I have several of them listed here, there are obviously others. But some of the key ones were that we really need to integrate our planning and implementation. We needed basically a plan, a long-term plan for our transportation network that really identified what are the key issues and challenges, both within the city and getting off of the plateau, and what could we do about them? We certainly will be looking for ways to ensure the safety of all the users, whether they're motorized or non-motorized. There's a lot of new technologies coming down the road, so to speak, that we need to try to figure out, what are the key ones that will really affect how our residents and workers and visitors get around on and off the plateau? And how do we try to incorporate them into either our capital programs or our operations? We clearly need to address and manage growth. We really wanted to focus on multimodal planning, including transit, because when you read the comprehensive plan, there's a lot of policies in there regarding providing options for people to get around, again, within the city and off of the city. So those are some of the reasons why we embarked on developing the Transportation Master Plan, or what we refer to as the TMP. This is a really interesting map that Kendra and her staff developed. The map on the left shows, and this was, I don't know, a couple of years ago, I think, the road network in the city. The map on the right, though, shows just those roads that actually connect to something that leads out of the city. It's pretty stark contrast. That alone tells you that we need a plan for how do we move within the city and off of the city? And you need to plan that. You can't just say, "Oh, we need a road here, a road here," or there's a developer coming in, why don't we work with them to put in another connection? You really need to plan for not only future growth, but just for existing residents right now. How do we help our residents move around, again, on and off the plateau? So the TMP is really a long range, it's a 20-year look ahead out to the year 2035 to complement the comprehensive plan. And we, the vision that has been outlined in the Comp Plan is for a safe, accessible, and reliable multimodal transportation system. We want, again, we want to identify fiscally prudent investments, we want them prioritized because there's certainly far more needs than there are resources, so we have to prioritize them. And the TMP will come up with an objective set of criteria for prioritizing our capital There's been a clear desire by the, not only the current council, but the past council, that growth does pay for growth. Again, we want to leverage our new technologies. We definitely have to identify where our future road network, our new future road network should look like. When you look, again, remember back on the slide that I just showed, where do we want those new road connections to be? So that way, when developers come in, we can say, "It's in our comprehensive plan, we have to have a road here." And certainly identify partnership opportunities. There's a lot of, a lot of planning and construction going on around the region, all the way from sound transit and metro to each of the individual jurisdictions. And we really want to look ahead and see where can we start, start and continue to partner with other entities, whether they're school districts or our large transit providers, to help leverage the scarce resources in the region, to help... transit providers, to help leverage the scarce resources in the region, to help, again, our, our residents and the people that work here to get on and off the plateau. So we, last summer, we had a very robust public outreach to identify what our transportation goals are for, for the TMP and for the city. And so, there were, kind of fell into three buckets. People said they wanted complete connections for all modes. Again, when, when we talk about all modes, it's driving, single occupancy, transit, walking, biking, rollerblading, you know, whatever, just to make connections for folks. Of course, we want it to be, want it to be safe, but also respect community character. And community can be the city as a whole, or it could be by neighborhood. It's a kind of, it's, we've talked a lot about what community character really is, and it is difficult to put our arms around it and come to an agreement. But I don't think that there's any question that the transportation system does affect the community character, however that's defined. And speaking of the community, it certainly, this TMP certainly has to be supported by the community. They're the ones that are helping paying for it, they're the ones that should have a huge influence on, on what that future vision looks like. And of course, it, it needs to be fundable and implementable, it has to be realistic. Certainly have a vision for what we want the system to look like, and we will be having some stretch goals, but in the end, we have to be able to pay for it somehow, whether it's with, through impact fees, through grants, partnerships, through property taxes. There's, there's a wide range of options that we have to fund these projects. Just a little bit more information and sort of graphics about the priorities and goals. We will be developing a prioritized project list for the next 20 years, and that will influence and inform our six-year Transportation Improvement Program. We'll, we'll definitely focus on investments that get the most bang for our buck. And again, what, what that list is, it'll be determined by input from the Planning Commission, from the City Council, from our, from our public. And over to the right are the six goals that we heard from both our community and, and our council with, through a number of meetings and pop-up studios last summer. The system, the first one was certainly that the system should be efficient. That's, that's, we, we, again, because we have such limited space, we have limited resources, we want to have a system that's as efficient as possible. We definitely want to be able to, again, move within the city and to regions. We, we are a bedroom community, and by definition, that means most people who are employed leave the city. And, and so, we are, we will be looking for ways to help make that efficient. Easier to get places, again, multimodal transportation, to give, give people options. Fiscally sustainable, we talked about that. Safe and welcoming, that has a lot to do with, as best we can, preserving the community character, whatever that means and whatever that looks like. And that's, that will be a topic of thorough discussion with our community as we pick up the TMP after, after this particular phase of getting the comprehensive plan and the codes amendment, amended, to, to deal with the concurrency and level of service that we'll talk about in a minute. Again, and the, and the sixth one, again, preserving the character of the neighborhoods with the transportation system. As we develop those goals and policies, or, I'm sorry, not the policies, but the goals and the priorities, last year, the council did start focusing on concurrency and level of service. They directed us last summer to stop work on the TMP and instead, focus our efforts on revising our concurrency policy and level of service, which really brings us to here tonight, to, for, for the two hearings. A couple of the things that the council highlighted was that the driver's experience should be a key measure of the system performance. We, in the existing concurrency program, we just looked at the PM peak hours. They wanted us to also look at the AM peak hour, given the number of schools and the, the density of the schools within the city, because this certainly impacts the, the ability for people to efficiently get around and off of the plateau. The concurrency program was complicated, it wasn't documented well. And so it was, not only was it hard to understand, it was, it was a bit difficult for staff who had, it's been almost a complete turnover since the concurrency program was initially developed. And so we, we couldn't really explain thoroughly how the, the existing concurrency program was developed and, and what were the assumptions. They also wanted us to leverage innovative data. We did use drone data, we're using INRex data. There's, there are other sources out there that we will be using as well, to help us develop the, the Transportation Master Plan. And again, maintain the, the ability to, to charge high traffic impact fees. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Kendra. She's going to go over some of the more technical pieces of the concurrency and LOS, and then we'll go into the Q and A.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners, Kendra Breland, Farron Pierce. So, first of all, what is concurrency? And I know we've, we've done a little bit of 101 with the Planning Commission, but for the community, just to kind of give that background. So, the Growth Management Act, which of course is a state law that was put in place in 1990, requires, essentially, it asks all communities to set a concurrency policy. And essentially, what concurrency is, is that as a community grows, are we building our transportation system concurrent to maintain our level of service standards that we've stated in our comprehensive plan over time? And so, you know, kind of the graphic that's there on, on the side of the screen there showing development and facilities, those are the two things that we're measuring in concurrency. So again, growth in terms of the number of new employees and commercial square footage that's brought into a community, or their number of new homes. Concurrent just asks, are we building our transportation system to make sure that we can accommodate this new growth while not sacrificing the transportation conditions that we've promised to our community as a part of the comprehensive plan? And just, essentially, state law states that, you know, if concurrency can't meet met, then at that point, a community can deny growth. And so that's why it is a very important policy from the perspective of a city. So level of service, level of service, of course, is essentially the, the center point of concurrency, the focus of it. So that's, that's how we measure, are we meeting our standards or not? So the city of Sammamish's existing level of service standard, and this is, this is still in place today, has essentially three components to it. First is intersection-based level of service. And this is measured in terms of average delay of cars experienced at, I think we've got a set of now 43 concurrency intersections around the city. And the current policy only looks during the afternoon commute period, so it doesn't look in the morning at all, and Cheryl mentioned that. The second component of the city's existing concurrency policy is level of service at segments. And so really, how this is measured is by looking at how many, on a daily basis, how many cars are using a given roadway, and what is the estimated capacity of that roadway? And essentially comparing the volume to the capacity that roadway, and saying, "Well, are we overcapacity, or do we still have capacity remaining?" And then the third component of the city's existing concurrency policy is called roadway corridor level of service. And essentially, what, what this does is it takes groups of roadway segments and it combines them. So for example, along Iskua Pine Lake Road, or along portions of 228th or Sahali Way or East Lake, Sammamish Parkway. And it combines multiple segments together. And then, based on the weighted average of the volume-to-capacity ratios along those segments, are we still meeting our standard? And so the two pieces that have essentially played into the city's concurrency policy are the first and the third on the screen. So, the intersection level of service, are all of our intersections meeting our PM peak hour standard for delay? And then the second piece that's asked is, of these corridors, which are combined, which are essentially groups of multiple segments, are these corridors on the whole meeting their standards in terms of, do they still have capacity once we've accounted for all the growth in our community? So, we've been working, as you know, with council and the Planning Commission for a number of months to update the, the way that the city measures its level of service. And essentially, it's, while we looked with council through a variety of options last fall, where we've landed is to use intersection level of service. And so instead of having these multiple, multi-pronged measures, we've gone to just a single measure, which is intersection level of service. Now, one addition that's been made, and we'll go into this, is that while in the past, cities only looked at the PM peak hour, now we're looking at both the AM and the PM peak hour at intersections. And, and a point that's on the bottom of the slide, and I, I don't want to, to gloss over it, most cities only measure intersection, level of service at intersections. So, going to this more simplified level of service standard really is not a departure from the norm in Washington State, it's actually more of a return to what other communities are doing. So, you know, I didn't want to, I don't want folks to, to feel like Sammamish is now becoming more simplistic than other communities, that would not be the case. So, the intersection level of service, just to give a little detail in terms of how it's measured, first of all, the standards. So, for your principal arterials, the standard for intersection level of service is D. So generally, what that means, if it's a signalized intersection, generally, we'd expect that vehicles should be waiting no more than 55 seconds on average. So, at a major intersection, that's kind of our expectation, is that if you're a driver on average, you should be waiting less than a minute at that light. We do have, in the city, and, and it's been retained, it's in current law and in this proposal, a bit of a, some flexibility for where, at intersections where you cannot achieve that level of service D standard with three or fewer lanes, that we allow for delays to increase to a level of service E, which is no more than 80 seconds of delay at that same signalized intersection. You might ask, "Well, why, why are we allowing for that?" And really, the, the rationale here, and this is why it's been on the books for a very long time, is that we're a suburban community, people need to be able to cross roads. Yes, many people will be in their cars, but also people will be walking across the roads, people will be biking, people will be pushing strollers. And we want to make sure that we're not making our transportation system overly built-out and hostile to kind of those non-motorized users. So it's, it's very typical in a suburban jurisdiction to make sure that we're not overbuilding our infrastructure. Did you want to add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, for example, Pine Lake and 228th is LOS E, because there are more than three approach lanes in any one direction. So you can imagine, if we expanded that intersection, it would be huge. And it's quite a barrier to pedestrians.
And that's the standard. So it's not to say that at night, no, we have some materials in, in the packet, I don't think it's operating at level of service E today. But the city would allow it to operate up to that condition before realizing that it needs to make additional modifications to the intersection. At our smaller intersections of minor arterials and collectors, we have a level of service C standard. So, if it's a signalized intersection, we're saying that folks should wait no more than 35 seconds. And many of those intersections of those roadways are not signalized. So they tend to be either stop-controlled, or either always stop, or, or, you know, a one-way stop, where you come up to an intersection, you might have a stop sign, but the major road does not. And in that case, the average driver shouldn't be waiting on the stop-controlled approach any more than 25 seconds. So that's kind of what these level of service standards mean.
Absolutely.
Yes, this is a long time ago. But this level of service and, and, you know, different services, that is an average for any time of the day, or is that just during AM and PM peak?
During the peak hour, is how we're measuring it. Which that, at other times of the day, because traffic volumes tend to be a lot lower, we would expect that the delays tend to be lower. So this is, this is measured for the peak, which is intended to measure the time when the system is under the most pressure.
Okay, so if it fails during the peak time, then we would say it's not meeting?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and just Cheryl, Cheryl thought it was important to kind of bring up, why are there two different standards? Why do we have a standard for signalized roundabouts versus a different standard for stop-controlled intersections? The main justification I've heard a lot over the years, but I think it really does come down to safety. So, if you're a driver and you come to a stop sign, there's, there's nothing, it's, it's not quite like a red light, it's, it's kind of your choice when you feel like it's safe to proceed and move through. And I think, you know, as a part of traffic engineering, how we've put this together, how, I should say, the practices put this together, because this is height with capacity manual methodologies, there's a recognition that we don't want to impose too much delay. And so at these stop-controlled intersections, allowing for less delay, such that drivers don't have as much temptation to go out and put themselves in a risky situation. Of course, the longer delays get, the more people can become impatient. And so that's, that's why these stop-controlled intersections tend to have a lower allowable level of delay than a signalized or roundabout intersection.
I have, hopefully, this is a modification of something that you talked about, the width of an intersection for pedestrian crossing. And I can remember about a year and a half ago, when we were looking at regulations and codes for roadways and the things that went with it, there was, it was new to me, but I really bought into it, that, yes, you widen the roadway, but that makes it very difficult in time for somebody pushing a stroller or just strolling across the street. And there seemed like a figure of 40 feet, or something like that. And I get it now, and I think I strongly support that, because before, I said, "Oh, no, widen them and let us stroll across." Well, some of us don't stroll quickly. Maybe that's an oxymoron, I don't know, but that's it.
That's a good observation. Okay. So just to give you a little bit of timeline, and Cheryl already talked about this in her remarks. So this concurrency work essentially started back in the late summer of 2017, in August, when we were asked by council to kind of shift our focus over from the TMP and move into focusing on this concurrency topic. The city established the Emergency Moratorium in October of 2017. And we've been working very dutifully with both the previous council and the current council to identify kind of a new level of service standard. So to, you know, kind of give you just a little bit of historical, in the fall, in September, October, and November, we worked, we had extensive number of meetings, both at standard nightly council meetings, as well as daytime technical meetings, to go through a variety of different level of service and concurrency approaches. So I haven't counted how many we looked at, but we looked at time of travel, we looked at different multimodal level of service, we looked at standard, just maybe stripping away the non-motorized aspects of the current corridor approach. So there were extensive presentations, we kind of did a concurrency world tour in late September, looking at, you know, a variety of different models all around the state. And then talking about how each of those models might fit within Sammamish. So, at, kind of, that kind of culminated this past spring in receiving direction to really go with just intersection-based level of service standard, the AM and PM peak hour. And it's not to say that this standard hits the highest aspirations of council members. Some of the council members have expressed a strong interest in moving it to time of travel at some point. But when we explored those models in the late fall of 2017, there was concern about how long it would, it would take, and how much investment it would take at this point to put such a, a level of service standard in place in Sammamish. There was concerns that there aren't a lot of models for us to follow out there, because there are not a lot of communities currently using that technology. We would be reliant on INRex, which is still fairly new, and we're still filling out. Staff has just purchased some of the, the data, and we've been using it, but it's going to take some time to get used to it and realize how it can really be pulled into protocol. So it was decided at that point that this was the best approach to move forward, to essentially address many of the issues with the current concurrency process. It, it got rid of the average daily traffic volumes that were a concern for council members, that they were essentially moving the focus away from peaking conditions. The movement away from the corridors got rid of the, the averaging along The movement away from the corridors got rid of the averaging along the segments. There was a lot of concern that, you know, one segment along a corridor may be failing, but others are doing okay, and so we're not looking at that failure. There was also concern about the, the lack of looking at AM conditions. The corridor, the one other thing I will say about the corridor standard that folks were concerned about is it gave a lot of credit for non-motorized facilities. And while, as a transportation practitioner, I think those make a lot of sense for moving people and helping complete your system, and as a part of the TMP, we will absolutely be looking at those, there was concern that giving them credit within a concurrency framework maybe, again, was a little too rosy of a view of traffic congestion issues within the city. So those are just kind of some, all of the reasons why we went with the intersection-based level of service standard. We got direction from council finally in April to move forward with that. And essentially, ever since then, we've been working to essentially update the comprehensive plan under kind of this emergency ordinance, to really just update the comprehensive plan transportation element to address the changes in the concurrency policy. And we're here tonight, it's June 21st, and we are looking at our public hearings with council on July 10th and July 17th. And knock on wood, this, this process will move on and we'll be able to resume the TMP. So I probably have covered most of this. I mean, just quick summary here of the meetings that we've had on this specific topic. We've had some joint meetings on April 30th, May 15th, and June 4th. So we really appreciate the time that the planning commission has put into it. Again, important to stress that the amendments to this comprehensive plan transportation element, this is not our final look. The transportation master plan is going to be a complete overhaul. But this is updates that are strictly related to transportation concurrency and level of service. The proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan and the transportation elements, we'll be talking about, I guess, in the public hearing, which we'll get to after questions, it sounded like, from the chair are in the packet materials. And we've specifically highlighted those changes that have been made since our last joint meeting, which are generally non-substantive. So if we can, we're going to just switch screens here and pull up some of the questions that we've received from commissioners. Did we want to, I don't know, Madam Chair, what your pleasure is, if you wanted to take other questions first, or if we should dive into these that we received via email?
Let's dive into these. And you can just address the person who they're from directly, and have a kind of a direct conversation.
Okay. Okay, did you want to just maybe address the question, and then I'll jump into the answer?
So the first question that came in was about the motion that was made on the June 4th meeting, if the motion was voted upon, and what was the result? So the motion that was ultimately passed on, on Ju-- actually, I think it was June 5th--
Was this June 5th?
June 5th?
It must be, yeah.
That's right. Was that the, the council asked the staff to run the, rerun the model for the 2016 existing conditions for the 8 to 9 hours, since we had already run it for 7 to 8 and for 45 to 545. So the, the, actually, it's a PowerPoint slide that, that we presented on June 5th, we just copied and snapped it in here. That shows you that there are six failing intersections in, from 7 to 8 AM. And from the 8 to 9 AM, there are three of, the failures from the 8 to 9 AM is a subset of the 7 to 8. So the 7 to 8 AM failure list is, is a, is, what do I say? It's, it's a bigger, there are more failures from 7 to 8.
Yes.
And the reason why is that, because of the schools. Most of the schools start between 7 and 8. And the couple of schools there, sorry, need my glasses. Let's see. Let's see. 2:40, I think 11, 9 and 11, the schools start at, I believe, 9--
7:40 AM.
They're 7:40?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But they're, they're because of the schools.
And I'm going to just make a quick amendment to what Cheryl said. This was actually presented at the meeting on Tuesday night, so on 6:19.
Oh, right.
That's okay. It was in response to her request, I think, on 6:5.
Thank you.
But anyhow, the, you know, the, the finding was, was that 7 to 8, the question that council members is just, well, what if our peak hour was 8 to 9 instead of 7 to 8? How would our results be different? And we looked at all 43 of the intersections, concurrency intersections within the city, looked at the traffic volumes from 7 to 8 versus 8 to 9. We ran the same city traffic model in synchro and found that the failures were considerably less severe due to the school's start time. So the 7 to 8, which was originally presented to council, is the more conservative peak hour in terms of showing more failures and resulting in more infrastructure improvements needed within the six-year TIP.
And again, this is the 2016 existing conditions, because you'll notice intersection 35, that is now an LOS A, because the developer signaledized that intersection earlier this year. So, but as of 2016, it, it was projected to fail.
Okay. We'll go to the next question.
I'm sorry, Kendra, can I just ask, as a result of that, is that why now our peak hour is 7 to 8, and we don't use the 8 to 9 as a peak hour, because that's the more troubling time?
That is correct.
Okay. And officially, that's our peak hour, the 7 to 8. Because I know there was some discussion as to which, what should be our peak hour? Should we be combining them? Should we pick one over the other? And combining them seems like that that created even more of a problem, in that you get less accurate data, because it's averaged over two hours as opposed to one.
That is correct.
So officially, now, our peak hours regards, the model is 7 to 8--
Correct.
AM. Okay, thank you.
And so the, the columns that don't have data in there, what does that mean?
Yes. They don't have a failure.
They're not failing.
So we only are showing, you know, our failure. If you look into the packet material for the 619 meeting, we actually do have every single intersection in turning, including its level of service, whether it's failing or not, for all of these time periods. We just wanted to highlight those failures for the PowerPoint slide.
And then, which of these charts is going to be used in the ultimate, in the comp plan? Is this the revised one, or the one before this?
The current comp plan, what we have tonight, shows 7 to 8. We don't have the 8 to 9 in there. That was, that was shown for informational purposes only for council members, and we didn't get any direction to revise how the comp plan tables are shown at the meeting on Tuesday.
Thank you.
So can I just, to clarify, this is what the model shows the conditions will be, right? This isn't--
It's actually 2016.
You reference in here--
Mm-hmm.
Right, but it's, there's a reference in here, an update on the drone video, and INREX data was also discussed. But this really doesn't reflect that, correct? This is just what the model shows?
That is, that is correct. We presented at that meeting on what we've seen from the drone data and the INREX data, and it generally confirms what the traffic model is showing.
Okay.
Okay, this is a little fussy. Sorry, we're having some technical difficulties. We've, we've reached kind of the, the end of my technical abilities. Oh, this is a good one.
Can you see that?
So the next question, yeah, was around, just if there are, I think we've already kind of addressed this, were there any decisions or changes by the council regarding the updates that we're reviewing today? I, I think that was in regards to the meeting on Tuesday, and we did not receive any direction that changed anything that we're looking at tonight. Okay. So this is where we get into some of the more multi-pronged questions here. I can just start it. So, and we appreciate kind of all these questions, because we know a lot of these are on people's minds. And so it really, you know, was a nice opportunity for us as staff to, to respond to some of these questions. So, first question, prior comments have indicated that the currently proposed intersection level of service model does not analyze or predict corridor congestion and essentially ignores it. The INREX data should show these, okay, these data historic, conditions historically. So just on the question of our model, and how does it reflect corridor congestion? The synchro model, essentially, what it does, and, and we talked about this a bit on Tuesday night, it, it does, when, when delay is imposed by the intersection at question, so if you're looking at intersection A, the delay that's caused by that intersection, by its traffic, you know, its signal timing, or by its stop signs that exist, that, that delay is recorded very well in synchro. Where we have limitations in the model is when there's delay being caused by a downstream intersection. So for example, you're coming down the hill along the hallway, and the congestion that's caused by 202 that might be spilling back into your intersection, that's what synchro is not very good at collecting. It, it doesn't have any way of recognizing delay that's caused by a different intersection. And so the question was, well, you know, what are we doing about it? How, you know, is this, is this an okay thing to be ignoring or not? What I would say is the city's not ignoring it. Yes, it, it doesn't fit into our concurrency model, but that's the whole reason for collecting the INREX data and doing some of the other observation methods that we've mentioned, is that the city knows that these are happening, and we're actively looking for fixes, and particularly at the 202-Sahalyway intersection, that's, that's a very important thing for the city. And those are things that will be addressed, but not within a concurrency framework. They're addressed through some of those other tools that we've brought up from the perspective of transportation. We've talked about the transportation master plan. City also coordinates frequently with other regional agencies. INREX data is a, is a good proxy for some of the issues, the duration of that, of, of that congestion. So Commissioner Bogman, since you brought these, I, I don't know if there were, if you wanted us to address any more aspects of that question. We'll move on to parts two and three of the question as well.
Yeah, I think it's all kind of one question. I think the underlying issue, to some extent, is that intuitively, it seems wrong to people that we create a tool that doesn't reflect their experience, which is, you know, on 228th, right out in front of City Hall, here, is frequently a case where it's backed up through multiple stoplights. And I don't think it's very clear, it hasn't been very clear to me, and I suspect other people perhaps, a, what is the result with the intersection level of service? In other words, does the intersection level of service analysis actually end up looking better, because fewer cars are going through, because now they're going slow to begin with? Or, or does it somehow look worse, because everybody's backed up, and so there's a, you know? And then part B of that is really, then, are we, are we going to do something about that in the future, and what does that look like? Because the message that's come through, to some extent, is that we're utilizing a model that ignores congestion, and then nobody hears anything you say after that. And the perception becomes, well, corridor congestion is no longer going to be an impact for development. Therefore, we actually have a lean, more lenient concurrency model than we used to. And I think somehow, we need to try to explain that, so people can more readily support the model that we're, we're chasing after right at the moment. So, you know, what happens? What, what does that corridor congestion do to the current model, and what are we going to do about analyzing that in the future?
Okay, that's a lot of questions there. We'll, we'll start to chip away. So I think the first question you asked is just in terms of proximate intersections, and how does synchro measure those? Within the city, we're not actually seeing huge issues where the synchro model is not performing well. Generally, it is measuring congestion within the city. Yes, there are times when queues back up, but those don't tend to persist throughout an entire hour. So on the average, and again, we've got an hour peak hour, we don't have a 10-minute peak hour, a 15-minute peak hour, those, those queues are within the measurable limits of synchro. There are a few cases, there are a few places where, you know, clearly, we have some intersections that aren't performing well. The synchro model has flagged that, and it is failing the city's standards. So I think, you know, in those cases where you've got, you know, just extreme and immense congestion, synchro is able to collect that. Now, whether the delay at that intersection is 120 seconds, whether it's 180 seconds, whether it's 300 seconds, it really doesn't matter. At that point, we've said it's a failure, and a project needs to be programmed within our six-year TIP. And I think that was something that, as we started looking through all of the intersections, the 43 concurrency intersections that we're talking about with council, I think there's only concern around kind of two or three, in terms of, you know, what, you know, what we're showing in our model versus maybe what the observed experience is. And for those intersections, those are all focus points for staff. So what are we doing as a part of the TMP and ongoing city monitoring process? First of all, the INREX data is this fantastic 24/7 data source that staff can log into at any time and look at, you know, kind of what are the issues? I know there was an issue around the Safeway a week or two ago, with, you know, kind of a construction issue. And staff were actually able to look at the INREX data and look at, okay, we do see that there's a hotspot here. Whether INREX is showing that as a yellow or a red, that's actually a setting that you can look at in INREX, and you can actually calibrate, you know, where, you know, if we want to say that 15 miles an hour is now popping up as red, you can actually set that up and flag it as an issue. So that's, that's great. It's also being recorded permanently, so staff can go back and historically look as well, for the time periods that they've purchased the data for. In terms of, you know, some of these issues, you know, how do we address issues along hyper-congested corridors? And nobody would say Sahalyway is not one of those. Is Qua Pine Lake Road, is Qua Falls City Road, all of those kind of fall into that category? That's where, you know, simulation is probably your best technique. It's a much more detailed level of modeling. It's, it's a very data-hungry approach. It, quite frankly, costs the city a lot more to do. But when you're planning capital investments along these major corridors, I would say as a professional, that's where you need to go. If you're going to be making a multimillion-dollar decision of how to design a roadway corridor, you want to have the best information possible. And so that's kind of the, the process the city will be using moving forward. From the perspective of routine concurrency evaluations, though, so every time a little developer comes in, and they come to the city, and they want to do a short blight, you want to divide, subdivide your property, you're a fairly small development that isn't subject to SEPA, doesn't meet the threshold, that needs to be, or at least current city policy is, it should be something that's replicatable, that isn't costing the city an enormous amount of money to do. Now, when you've got a larger development, for example, the town center, those, those sorts of developments are going to be subject to SEPA, and they're going to need to do a much more detailed analysis. And the city can really ask them to do whatever level of detailed analysis it feels is appropriate.
So, not to belabor it, but let me just ask it in a more simple manner. If, if we have a congested corridor like 228th out in front of City Hall, will the reflected performance of the intersections along that pathway out of the model be better, worse, or have no, no effect on what we would say their level of service performance is?
Well, first of all, I haven't heard any concerns about the results for the concurrency intersections coming out of our synchro model for those intersections. One thing I will say, if you're asking relative to a couple of years ago, are the results more accurate, less accurate, et cetera? I'd say they're more accurate for a few reasons. One, a lot of cleanup and calibration has been made to the model in the last year or two. The other piece of this is that now, instead of looking just at the PM peak hour conditions, we're also looking at AM. And so when, when there are issues along, I'll call 228th, school, school row there, looking at an AM peak hour really gives us the, the ability to monitor how those conditions are influencing traffic operations.
And I guess I just would like to add also that, as we generate our capital project list, which, that's, that's one of the major products of, of this effort that we're doing right now on modeling, is that, you know, there, there are several tiers of, of questions that we ask and tools that we use. We have been trying to emphasize that there's no one tool or one piece of data that will answer all of our questions and be the end-all. The, the synchro-- The synchro model, you know, it tells us, these are the intersections that you have problems with. And depending on what's causing the congestion, it might be because that intersection's, the capacity of that intersection isn't sufficient enough, and so we need to do something. Based on knowledge of the system, there are a couple of intersections, like Kendra said, it's because of the downstream intersection that's causing the, the quote "failure" at the intersection in question. We, we know what those are, so then we have to move to a different model. There are still models, but we would do some microsimulation that Kendra talked about to really get a handle on, okay, what, what's going on with those intersections? How much of it is the capacity of both intersections versus it's just the downstream intersection that is undersized? So that's where the, the microsimulation model will, will help us answer those questions. But we can't just use one particular tool and, and ask it to answer all of our questions. And I think we, that's something that's sometimes hard to, hard to understand, because we can tend to just say "the model," and people kind of think, well, that's, that's one, one thing, one entity, and it's actually, there, there are a number of models that we use, some with different specificity and different, different purposes.
So then, just to clarify that, what do we do for a concurrency test? When a developer submits a project and we're testing concurrency, what do we use? Do we use multiple things, or do we just use one?
Actually, do you want me to go through that slide?
We have a slide.
We have a slide!
We have a slide.
We have an extra little slide deck for this very question, so.
I guess I had always thought it was the one test that was utilized for concurrency.
All right. Yes. This feels like a little bit like when a bill becomes a law. So, we apologize, there will be no musical rhyming piece to this. But, so, Mr. John Q. Developer brings in his application, and that application is, I assume, given at the front counter out there, that, I don't know where he or she would go. But essentially, from that application, developers are asked to put a fair amount of information into that application. You know, what is, what is the nature of your development? What is the size, square footages? Where is it going to be located? And from that, the city extracts information that is essentially model-able. And so the first piece that's done is that it is added into the city's six-year pipeline model. So the city maintains a travel model, so this is something that forecasts volumes on specific roadways, six years out. And essentially, what is done is, in that model, usually I think the, the on-call consultant that's doing that, David Evans and Associates, would add those land use quantities into that travel model, and then they'd press "go" on the travel model, and it would populate each of the roadways with the number of cars that are on each of those roadways. And then they'd spit out those traffic volumes and put them into the city's synchro model, which essentially, the synchro model just, it takes the volumes and it puts it onto each of the intersections, looking at the lane geometrics that are in place, the traffic signal, if that's in place, stop signs, whatever the configurations of the intersection is. And then that predicts what the, what the delay time would be at intersections. And actually, what it, what it looks at is six years out from now. So, so really, we're, well, we're in 2018, we're often looking out to 2024 or so. And it also takes into account the investments the city has committed to, essentially assumed its tip, that would be funded over the next six years. And so then, it spits out a delay. So are, you know, are vehicles on average waiting less than 55 seconds at a signalized intersection of a principal arterial? And it provides those intersection results for all of the 43 concurrency intersections. So if intersections are failing, then that, that means that there's no, that concurrent, that it's not concurrent. And so then there's some choices. Okay, if it's not, if the intersections are failing, state law tells us that, one, city could deny the development, but other choices are that the city could fund, or, or somebody could fund the improvement that's needed to put in place to make the intersection meet its standards. And state law actually doesn't care who pays for it. Developer could pay for it 100%, city could pay for it 100%, but just that you're continuing to meet the level of service standards as you're permitting development. If, for example, the modeling goes through and all of the intersections are meeting your standard, then a concurrency certificate is issued, and then that developer would be able to move forward, but they'd also need to pay their impact fee to help fund future transportation capital in the city.
Yeah, I understand all that. What I don't understand, I guess, and I can't marry together in my mind, is the description that you just gave has a fairly rigid process that uses, from the sounds of it, two electronic tools to do a concurrency test. But two minutes ago, you just said, no one tool can tell us everything, we need to use lots of different tools to evaluate.
Sure.
So it still seems to me that we're using one process, which for reliability, for development, for everybody else, that makes perfect sense. But I think that, that, as commissioners on council and citizens of Sammamish, we want to make sure that that one process is something that we feel is providing a reliable outcome. And then when you say, well, we need multiple things to tell us what's really going on, well, then which one is it? Right? So if this test produces one, one result that, that says, your project is concurrent, we don't need to do anything, pay your impact fee, but there's other things that we need to do to really tell us what's actually going to happen, don't we circumvent the, the intent and the purpose of the concurrency testing process?
So the concurrency testing process is, as I, you know, think about concurrency, it's really a yes/no question. Are the intersections, or is the city's level of service standard going to be met with your development? Yes or no? If the answer is no, it actually doesn't tell you what improvements need to be put in place. So there's a lot of different ways that you can address it. So again, let's pretend you're a developer, and you're, you're putting in something, and you're impacting an intersection nearby. Well, there's lots of potential solutions to eliminating that impact. Could be, you know, expanding the capacity of that intersection. But maybe say you're a development in an area where you've got a really sparse roadway network, like that map that Cheryl showed. There are other types of solutions that might also be even more effective and help lots more, you know, future growth and development, and just general dispersion of traffic volumes through better connecting your roadway network. So that, in that case, maybe you're doing nothing to that intersection, but by then adding more connectivity to your roadway network, you're giving people more choices. Or say that sound transit comes, and, you know, in King County Metro, really greatly improved transit service here in Sammamish, and I see a little chuckle, but maybe. And to the extent that that becomes a more convenient option for folks, that might be a choice. And then there'd be less cars coming to the intersection. So it's mostly to say that concurrency is really just a yes/no. It doesn't tell you what the solution is. And in terms of thinking about, so when we embark upon setting a concurrency policy, one thing that, that staff have really struggled with in the way that we've approached this project, and that we've been directed to approach this project, of doing concurrency first and TMP later, is it'd be a lot more logical to do the TMP first and figure out what is the system that we want to be building? What are all of the logical transportation improvements? And then we'll set a level of service policy, and then we'll measure how that's being met. Right now, yes, we're, we're measuring whether or not level of service at 43 intersections are being met during the AM and PM peak hour, but we actually haven't yet defined what are all of the improvements that the city wishes to put in place, and that makes sense from your community standpoint. And that's the conversation we hope to continue in August.
I have a short follow-up question. So Cheryl, you mentioned that you look at multiple models, and I was thinking multiple models, like, you know, synchro, and then some, like you mentioned, the six-year travel model. So do we have a list of that somewhere? Is that, does that get incorporated in the, in the comprehensive plan, or in any of the documentation?
Sure. Cheryl actually put together a really good memo about that, and I think it was for the May 15th meeting, and it's in that packet.
It was, it's in the timeline section. It's something actually tonight that I was going to add to make an amendment to the comp plan background section, to add something like that into the actual comp plan, because I think it's so valuable, because we're having all these questions and comments about what goes into the model, and what are the models, and which models are used for which purpose. I do think it would be helpful to have something like, was put together for that meeting in the comp plan. So I mean, we can, you can go back to it on your iPad, actually. I was just looking at it because I was talking about adding it, and it's on the June 15th meeting, and it's in, it's like a timeline.
Is it in today's packet?
No, it's not in today's packet. You have to go back to the.
I can, I can go there.
You have to go back to the city council regular meeting with special joint. It's May 15th. And then it, you have to kind of go to that item, which is kind of far the way down.
So just to answer the question really quickly, we have.
Sorry, sure.
No, that's all right. I'm glad you referred to it, because we did, we did hand that out.
It's high-level TMP LOS timeline. I think it's just pertinent to what we're talking about right now.
That's the timeline, and then there was one on the models, so there were two.
And at the end of the timeline, there's a whole section, it actually starts by saying Sammamish's traffic models. And then it describes.
Yeah, now I remember, I think it's coming back, yeah.
It describes ZISM and.
Synchro.
Sidra and synchro. Yeah, so it outlines everything, and then all the inputs that go into that, because I've heard a lot of public comments say that, you know, it's like a black box, we don't really know what's going into the model, and it would be really nice to clearly outline what goes in, so that everybody knows.
Yeah, like the assumptions also? Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
I wanted to follow up on some of the things Mark's talking about, what I'm just hearing. So I think first, it's an opinion, then a question, then a statement. But on the opinion, I think it's really great that we have work on a transportation master plan, and we're going to do some work on the comprehensive portion, plan portion of the transportation element. My question is, the plan, the transportation plan, when it is finalized, still can be modified. Is that correct? There's, there's opportunities for modifying, including different ways to measure things? Is that? That's the question.
And I'm sorry, you're asking if we can modify the comprehensive plan?
No, the transportation master plan.
I'm sorry, the TMP? Oh, yes, we.
Okay.
We, we basically stopped work on the TMP last, late last summer, so we'll pick it up again as soon as we're through all the public hearings. So there's absolutely many, there'll be many opportunities to influence what that plan looks like in the end. And then we'll come back to you sometime next year to amend the comprehensive plan, because the idea is, is that the TMP will actually replace the transportation background element. We'll have a, the idea is, is to have an executive summary that will physically be in the comprehensive plan, and then the TMP will be an appendix.
I thank you for that.
We will definitely be back before.
Thank you very much for that. Now here's my esoteric statement. At the city council meeting on Tuesday, there was a quotation that I had to think about. First of all, I've always grown up with the parts are greater than the whole, but there, they brought up the true Aristotle proverb, I think, it goes way back to proverbs, that the sum of the whole is greater than the sum of the parts. And the first thing came to my mind, the reason I brought that up, is when you showed on the right, that one picture about all the roads in Sammamish, and then the ones that actually get you off the plateau, that's something, that's the sum of the whole. We can look at working on every road in Sammamish, but the idea is, sorry, getting off the plateau. And then it came, I'm sorry, I'll finish with this, Maslow's hierarchy of needs. I've been reading where basic needs used to be the first thing to be met, now they're looking at self-actualization, and that's where I'm going. We, we as a community need to have that, sum of the whole, that we can get off this plateau, and it might be a road improvement, it might be public transportation, it might be a lot of things, but that's what staff's going to do later. Okay, thank you.
That is what we hope to, to provide as, as part of the TMP.
I just have one more follow-up question on that. So I know there'll be a lot of changes in the transportation master plan. Could that in some way trigger revisiting concurrency and LOS as well?
It could.
It could, okay.
It certainly could.
Okay. I'm going to keep going through these comments, and I, I feel like we've touched on some of these. The question about how INREX data is being used. INREX data is essentially, it provides us with useful past and existing problem areas, and can help us prioritize projects. It doesn't have any forecasting ability, though, so that's kind of the primary limitation, but it's a really good way to check, you know, is our synchro model, you know, yes, we're looking, we're focusing on intersections, are there some more systemic corridor issues? INREX's data is a perfect place to look for that. And are, is there some reason that corridor congestion isn't important in concurrency testing traffic model? I'm not sure that we got this question quite correctly, but let me go through the pieces, because Cheryl and I actually put a lot of thought into this this afternoon, and kind of walking through kind of our response here. The city's existing program, as we already presented, is kind of on kind of a three-part process, or it has, has three components. And we heard from council that they didn't like those three components of the existing program. And we've already kind of touched on some of this, it doesn't address AM peaking issues, it's poorly documented, which Cheryl already brought up. It really does focus on putting improvements on some roads, but not others, and it's, it's, there's not really, it's very mechanical right now in terms of, well, where are we going to add sidewalks and bike lanes? Well, let's spit it out from the model. But yet, I think what, what council identified is like, well, sidewalks and bike lanes, what does that really have to do with traffic congestion? And, and you know, there's some, there's some reasonable nexus there, but it's not 100% as much as the, you know, current concurrency model, table T9 or T8, whatever it was, would suggest. And so as a part of that, that's, that's why we've moved to kind of the current model that we have. You know, as we shared over the course of the fall, we, we went through a variety of different approaches to concurrency, and for a variety of reasons, each of those were not selected. So, you know, over the course of the spring, it's been further refinement of the intersection-based level of service approach. We actually looked at lots of different flavors of intersection-based level of service, whether it's, you know, worst of all approaches, whether it's the worst-leg approach. And then just some of the others, actually, that we did include here, and it's on, you guys can look at your iPads, but for members of the community, some of the other things, just show them on the screen. We looked at quarter level of service intersection delay, average speeds and travel time, multimodal level of service, system completeness. So lots of different measures, and I'm struggling with how to show this, but I think there's eight or 10 there.
I actually think you've answered the question.
Okay.
Adequately, so we can move on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Saving me. Okay, so the next question is, what are the implications of essentially going back to the old program, but maybe fixing some of those issues, some of those things that people had issues with?
So if I can just preview that, there was a comment made by someone in the public that if we don't trust the new, if the city council is not confident in the new proposed plan, why don't we just, in order to have a pathway to meet their objective of lifting the moratorium, go back to the old model, but fix the things which you've actually just described?
And this, these were all actually, and I'm actually going to just cut to the chase of the question of, would this be difficult, possible, realistic? What I'd say is, we brought all of these up in the fall. So absolutely, it's technically very doable. It's more the timing of where we've gotten, how far down this path we've gotten. If, you know, technically, could we do it? Absolutely. Would it require a change to the current schedule? Would it require a change to the current schedule and probably to the, the cost of the overall contract for the work? Yes, it probably would change those things. But there's nothing about those questions that is technically undoable.
We did offer those options, is just to modify table T8, pull out the multimodal credits towards capacity. And there was a lot of discussion about it and the choice was for the, by the council to, to not go down that path.
And I would offer that I don't support that either, but as a suggestion.
Sure.
I think there's a potential for people to chase after it, so.
Okay. The next question was.
Did I ask?
Oh, go ahead. Yes.
Question. How long, how much longer do you think that would take to, if we went that route?
You know, I'd hate to, to hazard a guess. We certainly obviously could not stay on the schedule that we're on. It would be in the fall sometime that we could come back with an amended comprehensive plan. We would have to rewrite the code, renotice, redo the CIPA.
Three to six months.
Six-year tip might need to be updated.
It's a considerable.
Thank you.
Effort. But like, like Kendra said, it is possible though, certainly.
There are comments, the next one is about the model not being validated and what this means. So just going into kind of the model validation questions. So one thing we, we did want to stress is that the model, and let's talk about the travel model first because that's usually the model that we talk about validation for. It is actually calibrated to a level of accuracy far above industry standards. And we actually presented on that. I'm trying to remember what meeting. Do you remember Cheryl? I think it was the 515 meeting.
It was the second one.
Yes. Second one, so the 515 joint meeting, we presented on kind of that level of calibration. If you want some more detail about the actual model, there's a, there's a fair amount of description in pages T37 through T41 of the transportation element that's in the packet for tonight. And that gives some description of how the model is set up and calibrated. So we've, we've had extensive discussion with both council and planning commission who we've got in this, you know, matrix here. You can see a number of meetings. I'm not going to rattle out the dates, but one, two, three, four, five, six. And planning commission hasn't been at all these meetings to talk about the model and how it's constructed. And then I think, you know, the other piece of this though, the question is also about the intersection level of service. And, you know, the question is, well, are you going out and looking at every movement at all 43 intersections? And what we'd say is that that's, that's cost and time prohibitive. When I talk about all these other communities in Washington state, guarantee you, none of these other communities are going out to all of their concurrency intersections and looking and observing every movement as well. But what we have done is when, you know, Stephen Chen, the city traffic engineer, he can look at a result and let you know whether it makes sense or not very quickly because he's been working in the community, I have no idea, well over 10 years, 20 at this point?
Almost since incorporation.
A long time. So sharing our results with him, he's a very good initial gut check of results. And then where we have results that are counterintuitive, this is where we go out, either the staff or the consultants are going out, we're looking at these spot locations. To date, we've, we've looked at it, we've confirmed some of these spot locations with drone data, with INREX data or in-person observations. So these are all different tools that are being applied to make sure that we're getting reasonable results from the model. And again, as we came to council, I think it was on the six-four meeting, but maybe it was a different time, and showed the results, generally people are nodding their heads that the vast majority of the intersections that we're showing makes sense on an intuitive level.
I really think this is more about words being used and defined and what the perception is about what validation means and what's typically done or what may have been done in the past with our prior models. What does validation mean? I guess to me it means, and in particular, intersection level of service, what I'm talking about, is that you at some point do enough sampling that it represents a statistically significant sample, let's say, and you validated that it reflects within some level of accuracy, the physical conditions at some number of intersections measured over some number of days or something, right? And I think at the beginning, some of the communication made it sound like that really hadn't happened yet. And so perhaps as a suggestion, a little bit more communication for the community to understand that maybe that has happened to the degree that would be reasonable or an industry standard or a reasonable expectation and that it's not normal to validate all of the intersections and that doesn't make any sense. But, you know, is it all or nothing? Well, no, it's some number and how much of that has been accomplished, then people can feel more confident that the process is reliable because some level of validation has occurred.
That is a very good recommendation. I mean, what I will say is, the level of rigor that's been, that's been performed in this community is exceeding the level of rigor that I've seen in other communities.
Okay. And I appreciate that observation. What, what we have not done is, what we've tried to explain there is we have not physically gone out and tried to clock every single car going through the intersection and measuring the delay. And I think that's where the, the communication went sideways was, was that when we were asked, did the model, was the model validated by going out to the intersection? And no, we didn't because that's just not practical. And I think that's where the assumption was, well, then you didn't validate the model. So when, in fact, we, we have used other, other methods to validate, but not that particular one.
I feel like.
I think that wraps up.
I'm not sure if I might be missing.
I think we talked about the AM peak time.
Yeah, we did.
Okay. So we'll skip that one and we'll just go to the last question.
So, yeah, number 75, which I think here is 74, although I don't have my reading glasses. Skip over 74.
I think it's about AM peak hour. We talked about it, right?
The one thing I wanted to ask is that I heard comments from a council member that our forecast model included a list of projects that was not realistic for the forecast period. Has that, has that been addressed or discussed further?
The, what the model, what we're using for concurrency is very much following state law. So we look at what is in the adopted TIP and those projects that are assumed to be constructed within the six-year window of your TIP are modeled. And so that is very consistent with other communities. Council gives us direction by adopting that six-year TIP and we put that into the model. To do anything else, we'd be hearing from our development community that we're not following state law appropriately.
And I think it is a different issue whether the, the project ultimately does get built. We have to assume that what's adopted in the tip, that it will get built because you're always looking out into the future and then the council, you know, only funds the first two years of that six-year tip. And as we all know, the projects do end up sliding from year to year. But in terms of the model, there are several stakes in the ground that we have to just put in the ground and say, this is, this is our assumption.
I think it's.
One of which is the 2016 traffic counts. We could have used 2017. It would have just pushed this whole effort out by months if we had done that.
Yeah, I think that there's some perception in the community, for those that pay attention, that the old model and the prior council and some of the folks involved perhaps didn't follow the rules very closely or very accurately and that's where we got into trouble. And so I think there's a desire now with new people involved to say, you know, in order to have a reliable outcome, let's have reliable inputs. And if we all can sit around and say, the projects on the list are never going to happen in the time period, then our, what are we telling the community with this tool?
Right. That's right.
Okay, so I'll move to the last question, which is the amount of growth and what we're showing within our six-year pipeline and in our 20-year model. So again, when we're looking out in the future, there's two timeframes that we tend to look out to. Six years, pipeline for concurrency. And then there's the 20-year, which is the comp plan model, which is really kind of that ultimate build-out horizon. So from the perspective of the six-year pipeline model, specific to the, really anywhere in the city, what we're including from the perspective of growth in Sammamish is only those projects that have been permitted or issued certificates of concurrency. And that's consistent whether we're talking about residential development anywhere within the city or whether we're talking within the town center. So it really is just those projects that have been permitted or issued certificates of concurrency.
Including our six-year adopted tip.
Right, but I've asked this question several times. And apparently I'm not smart enough to ask it the right way.
No.
The, the problem I think is that, maybe this is just the difference between the, the rules and the perception, right? So people's perception is that within six years, there's a high probability the significant portion of town center could be constructed. There's also a high probability that within six years, some of the 2,000 single-family homes that made it under the wire before the moratorium could also be built. Whether those all made it to this level and got into the model or not is very unclear. My perception is that probably all, none of that, or very, very little of it, is in the forecasted six-year model. And if that's the case, I think it creates, again, a perception that that forecast is, while perhaps within the framework of the rules, not necessarily representative of reality. So I mean, there's 2,000 or thereabouts, single-family homes that, that I've heard had some level of interaction with the city prior to the moratorium, but I have no idea. Was that one house that got a permit? One development that got a permit? Was it 100? Was it 500? All 2,000? What is our six-year forecast really reflecting? Does it reflect what people think is going to happen? Or are we misrepresenting, because the, the rules are rigid, are we misrepresenting to people what that forecast shows?
Well, I want to, there's a couple of ways, you know, certainly, you know, we can work with planning staff and get back to you on, you know, how many projects actually received concurrency certificates? That's, that's one thing. But the other that I would stress is if it's a lower number in our six-year model, every project that comes forward that has not received a concurrency certificate is going to have to go through that concurrency test. And so all of that development will be thrown into your model. And if it's shown to have a failure, then the city is going to have to figure out how to address that. So whether it's in or out, in order to get in, it has to, to mount that hurdle. So I don't know if that gives some comfort level.
I think I understand that. I don't know that other people understand that. I think one of the conflicting issues there is the fact that we, we have a, our primary problem and one of the sources of complaint is getting to work in the morning down, let's just say down Sahale and getting back up Sahale at night. And some of those projects could contribute significantly to that congestion, but the concurrency model may not do much about it because of the forecast, I should say, the traffic forecast model may not do much about that because it's already nearly failing and it's already, you know what I mean? I think you may say that we're going to fix two intersections next to this development and then those intersections now are going to pass the test. But we've just contributed another 500 cars to the problem at the north end that we're still not fixing. So we've created a situation where we have a forecast model that doesn't really tell people it's going to take you an extra five minutes and then another extra five minutes to get to work in the morning or to get home at night. And people are upset about that, frankly, and I understand why. But it's also a difficult problem to solve. And to some extent, the fact that we've not communicated clearly the difference between what people expect and what the tool is, the forecast tool is doing, is perceived as a misrepresentation. I think we need to be more clear about that because that's really the source of a lot of this difficulty is those getting off the plateau and getting back on. We talk about it all the time, but that's the underlying problem.
So with each certificate of concurrency that's issued, those trips are put into the, into the pipeline model. So the model is always updated with each certificate of a concurrency. And then when the next, when the new six-year tip is adopted, those projects are, are put into the model if they're not already. So yeah, the, the challenge of communicating a very technical tool and, and yeah, there is, it is kind of a black box certainly of applicants coming into the front and then at some point they get a piece of paper that says you pass or you don't pass. And it is, it is an ongoing challenge to, to figure out, how do we communicate with the public without using an excessive amount of technical jargon, but not oversimplifying it to the point where the, the assumptions that they're making are not correct either and what they understand about the model is not correct either. But I do want to emphasize that our concurrency model is current with all the certificates of concurrency. So it's not like, you know, we have our model now and then we just set it aside. While we adopt, or while we, when we approve the certificates of concurrency, it's, it's not like we don't put those trips into the model. We do with everyone, everyone that is approved.
I think this is also where the, the 20-year model actually provides a huge amount of value, is that, so there's, there's obviously, there's a lot of growth anticipated within the town center. So it's not to say that the full 600 square feet of commercial space and the 2,000 residential units aren't being modeled. That's actually in the city's long-term modeling and as a part of, for example, the TMP, we're going to be looking at that and going, well, gosh, you put all this development plus all the other stuff that's planned citywide and let's see what those improvements are. And some of those improvements, you know, may not necessarily be absolutely critical and necessitated by concurrency for maybe another 10 years or so, but some of them may make a lot of sense. And as we're doing that modeling and looking at it, we might say, well, jeez, this may not be driven by concurrency, but this is going to make a huge difference in people's day-to-day lives as they're getting off the plateau and going to work. And that's where doing that level of upfront rigor actually helps the city. Yes, the city has to be a steward of concurrency, but that's just one of the many things the city is thinking about when it's planning its improvements. It's also thinking about safety. It's thinking about multimodal accommodations, safe routes to school. And also, gosh, if there's something that they can work towards with the region to really be a huge game changer in people's day-to-day lives, by figuring out what those improvements are, I think we just want to get working on figuring those out so that we can, you know, start planning for them. And, you know, until we get to that place where we're actually thinking we're long-range, unfortunately, you know, those, those solutions are not going to emerge if we just keep looking just squarely at concurrency.
I would almost prefer we didn't have a, or didn't advertise a six-year forecast model because I think current conditions and 24 years in the future conditions are probably more well-understood by most people and probably a better representation of the circumstances. So I would emphasize those as my suggestion.
Yes. So thank you very much for the questions you sent out. We do genuinely appreciate the opportunity to address many of the comments that have been raised out there in other forums. So there are other questions from commissioners.
I have a couple of specific, very specific ones. I guess what I want to do is, I want to get this thing over with. And when the city chose to solve the transportation issues through an emergency fast-track process involving just level of service, I think the whole thing became a big puzzle. And so at this point, in my opinion, I think we should just go for it and fix it afterwards. I don't, I feel backed into a corner on that, but I think it's going to be necessary. I, I have issues that, big issues that concern me in the TMP. For example, I don't agree with the major road classifications. That's huge. And that's really going to impact level of service. But I'm not even going to talk about it now. It's just, it needs to be talked about later. There's a little, there are a couple little things that I think are, make this complicated on page 223 and 227 in our, on our iPads. We have a statement that says adopted concurrency intersections. And it says, go to the comp plan to see what those are. And when I go to the comp plan, I don't think I'm finding them. I don't think those words are used in the comp plan. So I think that's confusing and I, I would really like to have that cleaned up and clarified. So I think that's confusing, and I would really like to have that cleaned up and clarified. On page 228, it talks about a public facility that requires a reservation. And I think that that sounds pretty strange, and I think we need to make it clear what that is. I have some more concerns about code, code sections, but are we going to talk about that later and do the comp plan first? Or should I bring up those code concerns now?
Cheryl, do you have a preference? Or Kendra, do you have a preference? Or Kelly? Yeah. The next one. Okay. Okay. So I'll open that up for questions again.
Okay, so those are, I really don't think anybody needs to answer me. Those are just my input on this.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Looking at the clock and going early, I move to extend the adjournment time from 8:30 PM until, and since it's the first day of summer and the solstice, and I think the sun sets at about 10, well, I was going to say 10:04. How about 9 o'clock? Is that safe? PM.
9:30.
9:30. I will modify that. My motion is to extend the adjournment time to 9:30 PM tonight.
Second. There's a motion and a second to extend the meeting to 9:30. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, we'll try to beat that. We'll try to beat that deadline. Okay, I have one question, and it's just fairly detailed. It's about the, it's like the 120-plus seconds. I, well, what page is it on? Can you get me to that real quick? I was watching that because I missed that meeting, and Kristi had brought it up. She suggested that we do 120-plus on the intersections, that we didn't think that the model was predicting the accurate number of delay seconds. And then I think the city manager said, you know, how does everybody else feel about that? But then I think we got sidetracked and went on something else, but then it has been changed in the comp plan.
It's page.
I know, I saw it. But do we keep that 300 somewhere?
Yeah, it's in the footnote.
Well, because I saw the footnote that explains it, but it doesn't actual, keep the actual number. It just erases the number, and it says 120-plus. Really?
It is in the footnote.
The description at that point was that that number doesn't really represent anything, because the math, the equation that they use to do that calculation, the higher the delay, the more inaccurate and misrepresentative.
So the math was actually inaccurate?
It works well when you have small delays, but the bigger the delay is, the more inaccurate it gets. I'm paraphrasing what was described that evening. And so that's why carrying that number is kind of meaningless, because it's not very accurate.
Okay.
And besides which, once you're over a certain level of delay.
You've already failed.
It's a failure.
Yeah, okay. The only thing I was concerned about is if you have, you know, you have three intersections that have 120-plus, and you're trying to address which one's worse. What if one of them's 600 and one of them's 300? We want to address the 600 first. So do we still have that data?
The data is still included in the footnote. That's the current version.
Okay. Then I don't have any further on it. And especially if the commission seems comfortable with the way it's been addressed, then I'm good with it.
Yes, in the footnote, as the Commissioner Endepur said, it is, I'm trying to scroll to it really quickly, it is, the actual calculated delay is in the footnote. Oh, except I'm.
Perfect. Okay, and I did see that, so, okay.
Footnote six.
Here we go.
Oops. Kevin, can you switch us over?
I don't have any more questions, and if anybody, nobody else does, then I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Staff, are you ready?
Chair, it's, if you want to see it there. Let's see if I can make this screen bigger. This is footnote six. It gives you the actual calculated delays.
Got it. There it is, okay. Perfect. Okay. I now open the public hearing. So is there anyone who would like to speak on the comp plan amendments? Mr. Paul Stickney.
[inaudible] This is the comment I gave to the person. Thank you, Paul. Good evening, Planning Commission, Paul Stickney, at 5:04, super late at South East. I'm going to talk about four quick topics, then read this comment which interweaves them, and then just have a summary overview at the end. The four topics are concurrency where we are, land use, past, present, future, and our endgame aspiration. Third, transportation master plan. And fourth, revisit the concurrency model at the end of those. Here's the presentation that I gave to City Council Tuesday. I said that current bad driver examples, I mean, experiences, are absolutely real, but they are symptoms. They're not the ailment. The ailment in Samamish is unbalanced land use over time, past and going forward. Our current comp plan is out of balance. And second, which is not in this sheet, because Valderrama called me out on it, because I forgot to put it in here. The second issue is that almost none of our TIP projects over time has the city done. I don't have a precise number, but I'm guessing as a community, we is the king's we. I get into it that way. I think that we've done between 5% to 15% of the projects that we've identified in roughly 19 TIPs and in two comp plans. And if any of you are interested, back in the 2003 comp plan, one of the amendments to that comp plan was from Jones and Stokes that had 35 road projects identified. Then we also have a 20-year wish list. If you spread all that out, not too much has been done. Now I'll get back in to the comment. I don't think many of you, but maybe you were, how many of you guys were at the Farron Peers City Road Open House, or Road Project Open House, or Traffic Open House, where they had that nice 11-by-17 sheet, and they listed nine or 10 topics? And we got to put a dot between 1 through 10? That was awesome. That's what these are for. These chips, real, true, you know, professional weight poker chips. I ask you to allocate those 20 amongst three congestion and bad driver experience issues in the city. One of those is, how much of our congestion and driver experience issues are caused by choke points outside the city which cause us to back up inside? How much are caused by schools during that roughly half-hour-ish time, which is real? I mean, heck, you're stuck. And third, how much would our internal problems be if neither of those existed? Now, I know that's a hypothetical that can happen, but I think it's a important hypothetical. My answer is, I would put nine of these 20 chips. I like them because they average into 5, you know, percent each. I'd put nine into outside choke points. Of all the bad driver experiences and congestion we have, I think about 45% of it is caused by issues outside the city causing us to kind of back up here. I think around 35% or seven, and I don't, this is not factual, this is anecdotal. I think about seven chips would fall, in my mind, on schools, and four would fall on internal problems not tied to schools or the choke points. This leads me to a recommendation as this process moves forward. Many times Farron Peers and the city has said that we can run the model many ways. I suggest that we run this model with all of it combined, which we have been. I guess we have that run. But I'd suggest running it another three ways. What are our internal issues if schools and outside choke points had no effect if they were solved? How do we, how do we look if we run internal issue, internal issues with schools? And how do we run with internal issues and the choke points coming back? I think the, all four of those model runs would really impact our transportation master plan and how we apply money to fix projects over time with peer and neighboring, you know, the county, Redmond and Issaquah, and in working with our schools. So the key in my comment, that I didn't have time to say to the City Council, is past, present, TMP issues that are coming up are real. That's why I made these recommendations. But the future, that is where the real nitty-gritty is and always has been in the Samamish. What is growth going to do? These things are iterative. TMP and land use and concurrency, they all interact. I suggest, and have been talking to the City Council and have met with them about a specific solution that I'm going to email you about, which is to reduce single-family homes citywide and increase multifamily citywide as land use for the future. My last comment tonight is, you heard me mention on the, you know, parks, about what the environmental benefits of housing balance are. How it applies to these issues that are happening today in transportation is it would reduce 20,000 future car trips. It would allow huge increases, which I'm not going to share the number until we meet, to our town center and keep the traffic at or below the current town center FEIS. Would create about 75 million that could go to road projects cash and create a renewable revenue stream of 3 to 4 million a year that could amortize another 50 million. There is a lot at stake here. I'm going to be reaching out to you about how it all can play to our community as a huge benefit, however this evening I stayed mostly on the concurrency side of things. And all I would close with, super quick, is these all interact. And as my landman partner, Richard Berg, said, he's told me many times, because he watches these, this is all fruit salad. It's just all mixed up and jumbled up. What gets it clear is where the heck we're going to be on land use. Run the model lots of ways and figure it out, and reach community unity, rather than being split to pieces over this unspoken issue of where are we headed on growth.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight?
I'm just going to follow up on what we just heard. And being anecdotal and hypothetical, I had the privilege of living in Nevada for seven years, the state of Nevada. And it would seem like, rather than poker chips, maybe the roll of the dice might be better on some of this.
Okay, I don't see anyone else who'd like to speak this evening on the comprehensive plan amendments, public hearing, so I'm going to close the public hearing. It's now closed, and I'd like to move on to deliberations. So in front of you, there's a sheet of paper that looks like this, on the city's letterhead, and it has two recommended motions. The first recommended motion is on top, so I would ask that someone go ahead and make that motion, and then we can make amendments as necessary.
Okay. So do I just read this?
Say, "I move."
I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council approve the proposed emergency amendments to the glossary and transportation element of the 2015 Samamish Comprehensive Plan that directly addresses concurrency and the level of service policies as presented by staff.
I second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, so now is the time to deliberate. Does anyone have anything to say? That hasn't been said in the last three meetings.
I support it.
Four meetings, five meetings, I'm not sure how many, but go ahead.
Just very quickly, I support it. I had all my questions answered. I think it's time to allow this to go through and to move forward on the issue. I think this is one part to a massive puzzle, and we need to move on.
I support what Commissioner O'Farrell, Commission Member O'Farrell, has just said. And again, as I started this whole evening, well, one of the whole evenings, it seems like, our work towards unanimous approval of the motion when we finally deliberate.
I feel backed into a corner on this one, and I'm not very happy about it. I don't like to go on record as approving it, but I feel that I have to, so I will vote to approve.
I guess I just wanted to, I had made a comment in a previous meeting that I think it's time to move on, would be the short version. And I guess I'd like to just say that I think that there has been a lot of, as Paul described, acrimony and division within the community, within other bodies. I hope that we can bring a degree of level-headedness to this. I think that we've struggled individually and as groups with trust and with not being able to see the forest for the trees, getting wrapped up and trying to make the thing perfect, and not recognizing that we still have opportunities to make course adjustments in the future. I would only say, I guess in summary, I hope that everyone can step back and recognize that there's been a lot of hard work, good work, done by a lot of people. And sometimes that appreciation does not get conveyed to, you know, the staff and to Farron Peers folks. They've been trying hard, and we haven't been the easiest customer. And I hope that we can find a way as a community to move on past this and start dealing with a multitude of other issues that, as a planning commission, as a city council, and as a community, we need to address. Right now, the train is passing us by because we're caught looking at our shoes. So we need to get some forward progress and get a little bit more momentum built up again. So I think there's all kinds of details we could talk about from now till the end of time, but it's becoming more and more irrelevant that we do that. It's time to approve this and move on, so I support the motion.
I would say, yes, I do support this motion. Again, piggybacking on what Mark said, I think the staff and the Planning Commission, the council members have put in tremendous work, and I think that has made all of us, at least I know me, a lot better in reviewing documentation. I think the one thing that, you know, has come up from this discussion is communication, I think, is key, and making sure that we are presenting to the community what goes into these models, what goes into all this calculation, is really important as we go ahead, because sometimes the driver experience is not matching what, you know, what the models are telling us. What I am really excited about, and why I want to kind of go to the next steps, is I'm really excited about working on the transportation master plan, because I think that is going to address many of the issues that are facing the community. And we have tangible things that we can do to improve driver experience on Samamish. So I'm really looking forward to that. Thank you.
Call for the question.
Wait, I have to say something.
Send my call for the question.
Okay, so I echo whatever, what's been said already. I really, really want to thank staff, because this has been tremendously complicated. It has taken a tremendous amount of patience. I think the one thing that, you know, has come up from this discussion is communication, I think, is key and making sure that we are presenting to the community what goes into these models, what goes into all this calculation is really important as we go ahead because sometimes the driver experience is not matching what, you know, what the models are telling us. What I am really excited about and why I want to kind of go to the next steps is I'm really excited about working on the transportation master plan because I think that is going to address many of the issues that are facing the community and we have tangible things that we can do to improve driver experience on Semamish, so I'm really looking forward to that. Thank you.
Call for the question.
Wait, I have to say something.
Send my call for the question.
Okay. So, I echo whatever, what's been said already. I really, really want to thank staff because this has been tremendously complicated. It has taken a tremendous amount of patience and level-headedness to sort of keep going and stick with the facts and, you know, maintain confidence in the model that is actually very, very accurate with, you know, within industry standards. And I'm just, I'm very appreciative of what was done and it was, it's a big ask to change your entire car and currency model from, you know, corridor and segment to just intersection. That wasn't a small thing, it's a big deal with a lot of changes. And it's hard when people are driving around and they see things that are different and they're driving around at different times of the day and I have confidence in the model, I have confidence in staff, and I have confidence in what they've done, and so I fully support the work that has been done and the motion. And I don't want to seem contradictory, but I mentioned before, I did want to make an amendment to add, to add the information from the May 15 joint meeting, and it would go in the section that is already existing, I think Kendra and Cheryl both mentioned it, it's in the travel demand forecast and projected needs section. It's on T, it starts on T-59 and it's a travel forecasting model and it goes through current land use assessment, so it starts to talk about some of the things that go into the model, but I was hoping, I didn't make a draft or anything, I'm just suggesting in my motion that we incorporate the information that you had already laid out into that part of the plan. So, I would move to make an amendment to add the information from the May 15 memo to that portion of the comp plan.
I second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to add the information that I've suggested. Is there a deliberation?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of accepting the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, so the amendment to include that information passes 6-0. And of course, I'll let staff, it's up to you guys to decide what you want to put in it. It's just mainly for me, just to address the concerns from the public of knowing what goes into the model.
Oh, man.
And we don't want to get too specific because it is the comp plan, right? So, we don't want to say this points to this and have to go change that if something changes. So, after, maybe it's a little bit of a balance.
With the chair's permission, may I move to call for the question on the motion as amended?
Yes. What does that mean?
You go ahead and ask for a vote.
Okay. Second. So, there's a, there's a, there's a motion and a second for the main motion, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, so the main motion passes 6-0, so we have completed our public hearing and deliberations on public hearing number one, the comprehensive plan amendments. So, good work. The second one should go a lot quicker, I anticipate at least. This is the code amendment section and I will first open it up for questions and I'll do public hearing and we'll see how it goes. So, questions? I don't have any questions. Does anybody?
I have a question. Do we have to update the code with the comp plan? Do we, must, is that a requirement?
It is because we cannot, we cannot enforce the comp plan without the code, I mean, we enforce the code, and so the code reflects the changes to the concurrency and LOS policies. So, we must adopt, we must revise the codes in order for us to enforce it.
Well, in reading the code on page 232 on our iPad, I'm having a problem with it. And it's, because it conflicts with our strategy, housing strategy for affordable housing. So, slowing down processes and eliminating public transportation options and charging fees works against the housing strategy, trying to promote affordable housing. It really impacts ADU development and maybe it doesn't have to. What if no more parking is created? What if an internal apartment is created for a person already living in the house? What if it's for the elderly who don't drive? What if it's transit oriented? I know these conditions change, but is the code requirement too stringent to help integrate and consolidate our sprawled neighborhoods? Would it be better to use environmental and social concerns as the guide for those things? And rather than transportation concurrency for ADUs?
Commissioner, can you tell us exactly what section of the code? I'm sorry, because we're having computers so slow.
Yes. 14A dot 030 dot 1 dot 5 and 6, as well as 14A dot 10 dot 040 one A.
What was, the first one was 14A 10 dot 030, the exemptions?
First one was 14A dot 030 dot 1 dot 5 and 6.
That number doesn't make sense to me. Do you mean 14A dot 10 dot 030?
It's on page 32 on our, 232 on our iPads.
Can you say in the...
Number 24, right?
Number 24. Is that what you mean?
Is that number 24, Jane?
I have 14.
She's got, she's got written down 14 point 030, but not the middle, the middle.
But there's a number on the very first column, is it number 24?
I wrote it down last night, I probably missed it. Maybe it's 10.
It may be 14A dot 10 dot 030.
Yeah, so that's 24.
I think that's number 24 on this, the very first column.
It's page...
Page 232, Jane, is it?
It's page 232.
Yeah, I think that's number 24. It's 14A dot 10 dot 030 and 1 in parentheses.
Okay, I wrote it down wrong, I'm sorry.
Okay. It's one for sure that you're talking about. Yeah, 24.
What is it?
It's number 24, it's what's on the screen. I think, Jane, is what's on the big screen, is that the one you're talking about?
I can't even see.
I know.
Can you look behind you then and see that one?
Here's 5 and 6, Roman numeral over here, so that would be...
Oh, yeah, the expansion of an existing non-residential structure.
Any development per minute for the following development because it creates insignificant or temporary additional impacts on any public facility. These are the developments that are exempt. I would like to make ADUs and some of our affordable housing fit into that if it meets certain conditions.
I think, I think, I think, Jane, what we're going to have to do is when we do the housing strategy, we'll have to make that suggestion at that point because they're not, we can't do any, we can't make any changes to the code that aren't part of the emergency ordinance, which is solely related to traffic and concurrency, so we can't go in and make a change that would affect ADUs because it's not related to the emergency ordinance. That's my understanding, is that right, staff?
I would, I would agree with you, but they're not going to let us change it and it's a permanent change that occurs now and it conflicts with what we're doing in another process, so it really bothers me.
I know, but I don't think we can...
We'll be stuck with this.
When we do the housing strategy, we have to make, you know, we have to make it a priority to change it and that's the only way we can change it. We can't, we can't change the comp plan outside of the, you know, the eight-year timeframes without some sort of emergency ordinance.
Okay. We're creating another puzzle.
But we could keep track of that one, right? So, when we do the code updates with other staff.
I don't think it's a huge one to...
Yeah.
I think we should be able to keep our eye on it.
And this is also something we can talk extensively, as you said, in the housing strategy. To me, that's where it fits and I like what Mark's saying, we can keep track of it, but let's address it in the housing portion.
I know, it's tempting, you know, it's like right in front of our face, but you just can't do that right now.
It's not just that it's tempting, it's that it's a conflict.
Do you have any other questions, Jane?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Anybody?
Madam Chairman, I don't.
Oh, you don't have to say that. Any other? Nope? Okay. So, I will open the public hearing for code change amendments. Public hearing is open.
Hello again, my name, Paul Stickney at 504-228-DAV. All I'd like to say is that the city can, in, in September, after you talk about the housing strategy, if you want to keep options open on change, the city could start a item to change next year's comp plan on the docket. That, that, that opens up each year roughly in summertime, and I don't have these times, you know, super precise, but sometimes like during August and September, there is a timeframe open for the public and for the city to turn in changes to the comp plan, so that will be happening after you do your housing strategy, so you haven't lost the opportunity to make a recommendation that the city put in a change to the, to the comp plan. And when I chat with you guys about what I just met with the city council on, there are some...
Paul, I don't believe your mic's on.
Yeah. Oh, sorry about that. As I chat with you guys about that, that, the, the housing idea that I've come up with that is going to go across the board, which I think has advantages in all major areas of the city, there are a couple options there with the comp plan that I'll talk to you one-on-one about. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed and now I will entertain motion number two.
I move the planning commission recommend that the city council approve the proposed code amendments to the city of Semamish's transportation concurrency and level of service regulations, including titles 14, 14A, 20, 21A, 21B, and 27A of the Semamish municipal code as presented by staff.
I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. It's open for deliberation. I'll start this time and say that I support all the code amendments proposed by staff.
I also support it.
I also do.
I will vote against it because it conflicts with other processes that we're working on.
Can I just clarify a question about code adjustments? If we, this should be a lot more flexible, I believe, than the comp plan, right? So, if we find something later on, my understanding is we could, through any time process, amend the code. So, I guess I, I'm just, for example, Jane's comment could become part of our code adjustments to the, the building code that we're talking about doing for housing. There's a lot of more flexibility. The comp plan's kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity until the next lifetime, but the, but the code can be changed at various times if necessary, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, actually, that's true and, I don't know, does that mean that we could entertain something like this in the code at this point? I don't know. I wasn't really thinking of it that way.
I defer to Kelly, but I, but what...
I wasn't thinking of it that way, really, I was just thinking like comp plan.
Well, I'm curious about, especially because it relates to housing strategy and if, you know, public comment and then public discussion on that, does that need to happen separately because it's related to the housing strategy? I think that's, that would be my only concern as far as...
I'd rather do it during the housing strategy.
Was that?
I'd rather do it during the housing strategy.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
But I really want Jane to vote yes tonight.
I think we need to defer to Kelly and find out what she says.
Okay, there I am, okay, so, can you hear me? I would recommend that the code amendments being considered tonight relate to the concurrency and level standards that policies that are, have been updated or to be updated, proposed to be updated in the comp plan and that future changes to code as they relate to the housing strategy be discussed at that time. So, there could be a recommendation as part of the housing strategy to review code and make a recommendation to look at concurrency and how that can be impacted, so.
But I think that, that was exactly what I had kind of suggested during our housing strategy discussion and there was a, an indication that there's a planned cycle of code amendments that will be discussed maybe late this year or maybe early next year to address housing issues, which I think the concern that Jane expressed about ADUs fits right into that.
Yes, so that can, as we're going through the housing strategy and looking at implementation strategies, that could be one that we, that we note as part of that plan, that we look at code specifically to be updated for the housing strategy as it relates to traffic and concurrency.
I know.
Does that make sense? So, keeping these separate and, and tonight, just addressing the code amendments as they relate to the comp plan, policy updates as proposed.
So, does that mean we can change the concurrency code requirements when we're doing the housing strategy? That doesn't seem to follow protocol with me.
No, the strategy, you would be recommending that the implementation be the code update. You wouldn't actually do the code update during the housing strategy, it'd be one of those implementation steps following the adoption of the housing strategy.
It'd be something that we propose to council, so as our housing strategy, we'll have a list of things that we're proposing to council to do and then council is going to say yes or no on all those strategies, but we, that would be something that we would list for them to consider, right?
Exactly.
And then if they considered that, then they would direct us to look at the code more closely, probably sometime next year.
Exactly, and they probably, you know, any of the code changes that come out of the housing strategy as recommended would be a work plan item for staff to start to do those updates or propose those updates and then go through the whole legislative process.
And then the subdivision code update that Jeff is already promising, that even might be another opportunity that's coming up even earlier, which is what Mark's talking about.
Exactly.
Absolutely, absolutely, and so we do want to note this so we don't forget it because it's, as we're doing all of this planning work this year, we just want to make sure that this is documented and that it carries through with the housing strategy conversation.
Okay. And I would like to add to, to what Kelly said, is we've been strictly instructed by our legal advice that these changes, that normally the comprehensive plan is only amended once a year and we are going to amend them twice this year. This is an emergency amendment and it must strictly stay within the confines of concurrency and level of service. So, I certainly understand your concern, Commissioner, but our instructions from, from legal advice is it has to stay within this small box.
I would like to go on record saying I also support what Commissioner Garrison has said, but I, you know, I did check around and it seems like this fits the method we're looking at it because we really need to address housing in a very sensible and broad concept. But let's get this thing moved forward to the council and hopefully unanimously.
I just quickly want to appreciate Commissioner Garrison's comment and I think her view on looking at things holistically instead of just through the, so I really appreciate your view.
Yeah, absolutely, Jane.
Thank you, Rituja.
Yes, yeah, me too, Jane, thank you.
And like Larry, I also support the, the change. It's a good change.
Yeah. Thank you, Jane.
All right. So... So, so Larry doesn't have to, I say I call the question. There is a motion and a second to adopt the main motion. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Oh, boy, and we're unanimous, 7-0, we approve, oh, 6-0, oh, God. 6-0, we approve the code amendments to the traffic concurrency and level of service standards. So, thank you, staff.
Thank you, and I, we just have one more slide, so you've got something, Kevin, do you need to?
There are next steps, we have to do something else?
No, you don't. I'm happy to say we can strike that, that top line there. We're done with the code revisions, our next step, so we will be going back to the council on July 10th for their hearing on the comprehensive plan, and then on July 17th for the code revisions, which you all did in one fell swoop, so thank you very much. And, and on behalf of the project team, thank you very much for your kind words and encouragement and advice as we move forward, so thank you very much. And if there's certainly better ways we can communicate, please don't hesitate to let us know, it's, it's a big help. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And prior to closing the meeting, could you, for the record, just clarify exactly what it was that you wanted staff to include from the May 15 meeting, from that amendment that you proposed?
Do you want me to, like, go back, like, the actual document name?
I just, we need some sort of clarification.
Maybe I can help, it's, it's the white paper that staff produced on the traffic models from the May 15 meeting. So, it's to summarize that white paper and, and add it to the transportation element background.
Yeah. Do you want the name of the document, or?
No, that's fine, that'll work, thank you.
That works? Okay, good. Okay, before we adjourn, I wanted to ask if Commissioner Garrison and anyone else who went to the Arch Housing Tour, if you'd be interested in giving us, like, a little update at our next meeting, because it is, we have a housing strategy meeting, and so, did anybody else go? No? Okay, so you're, so if you wouldn't mind giving, I know you, you wrote something and you shared with staff, which I saw, so...
I think I sent it to you, too.
Yeah.
So, I'm afraid to send it to everybody, because...
You don't have to send it to everybody, but at the next meeting, would you mind just talking about it a little bit? What you saw, what you thought, because I really wanted to go, but I couldn't, and so, that would be helpful. Okay, so, any other business?
And I move we adjourn with the idea that the days are only going to get shorter.
Thank you, Larry.
So depressing. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned at 9:07. Good job. Okay, that was funny.
Thank you, Chair.